Mayor Penzerga at the moment is absent. Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Vice Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with the invocation by Pastor Jeff Kelly. Perfect. So let's all stand. And then Commissioner Hay, you'll lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance right afterwards.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, we come before you today and we thank you for how kind you have been to us. You've created this world and you've made it good. You've filled this world with different people with diversity and beauty. So we're thankful that as we see this world, we're reminded of your goodness, oh God. Father, as we consider this gathering today, we remember that Scripture teaches us that you have established civil authorities. You've given them to us to promote peace and order and justice. And so therefore, today we pray for our mayor and our vice mayor. We pray for the various levels of city officials and for this assembled council. We pray that you would give them favor, oh God. Father, we pray that you would give wisdom to them as they govern amidst conflicting interests and issues in our times. We pray that you would help them lead in a way that would allow us to live at peace with one another and in this community. We pray that you would give a sense of what is best for the welfare and the true needs of our community and a heart for justice and rightness. Father, we pray that you would give them confidence to do what is good and fitting and that you would give favor on their personal lives and bless them, we pray. Father, we also pray for the agenda this evening that's set before us. We pray that the next couple of hours would be helpful and would benefit those who live and work around the city of Boynton Beach, which we call home. Thank you for your kindness to us. We thank you for your good and faithful God. And it is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic, where its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Pastor Jeff Kelly and Commissioner Woodrow Hay. Have we made the notice of civility and decorum?
No, we have not.
All right, so let me make that announcement. As always, with all of our meetings, speakers must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupted speaker. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual on the dais or in the audience. Public demonstrations that are disruptive, stamping of feet, yelling, personal attacks, all those behaviors are strictly prohibited. You will be given a warning and should you persist, you will be asked to be escorted outside of these chambers. We're going to move on now to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections. Let me begin with my left with Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no additions.
Thank you. We're going to turn now to Commissioner Hay if you have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda.
No, I do not.
All right, we're going to move on to Vice Mayor Turkin.
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, and Commissioner Cruz.
Nothing for me.
All right, thank you. As for myself, there is one item I would like to add to the agenda. There is information that I have received and it behooves me to share that information with the commission. And I will seek commission direction on what to do with that information. Right, this is pertaining to a retaliation claim. Is there any objection to adding to that discussion to the agenda?
No.
All right, thank you. With that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of amending the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously, and the agenda has now been amended to add that discussion. And for clarity, and I know it's customary, it is under new business because it is new business. Let's turn now to Section Two informational items by members of the city commission. I'm going to turn now to my right Commissioner Cruz.
I do not have any disclosures for today.
All right, thank you.
Nothing to do.
Vice Mayor, thank you. We're going to turn now to Commissioner Hay. Any informational items?
Not for me.
And Commissioner Kelly, any informational items?
I don't have any informational items, Mayor, but I would like to just take a minute. This morning, city staff, many of, many of our departments were represented this morning. Last year, we started a food drive with city staff for holiday baskets to be delivered through our local schools. And last year, we were able to do eighty-five baskets. And this year, we were able to fill two hundred baskets that are going to each of our schools in the city. And so I just wanted to thank all of the departments, in particular, Maely and Catherine, who have really, I think Maely started making phone calls the day after we delivered baskets last year to make sure this was bigger and better. And so I'm looking forward to our third annual one next year. But it was a great success and, you know, just thank, you know, the city staff for participating and donating and everything. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you Commissioner Kelly and all the staff that were involved in making that possible. All right, I believe that concludes all informational items unless there's something else that came up from anybody. All right, we'll move on to Section Three, announcements, community and special events and presentations. The very first item is the Library Advisory Board presentation. And who do we have? Mr. Clark, if you're here, if you'd like to introduce the individuals from our advisory board. And Ms. Taylor. And do we have their presentation up?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Craig Clark, Director of Arts and Culture. I'm going to turn this over to Jeannie Taylor, Library Director.
Hi. The library board is sitting here in the front row. They're going to come up. And George Feldman, who's the Chair of our Library Board, he'll do the introductions. And let me see if I can start the presentation.
We have no presentations.
Okay, well, they'll just have to talk to you then.
I believe I saw a presentation on the agenda backup. Could we pull that up?
Yeah, we did submit a presentation, so.
Yes.
I don't know why it's not there. But I'm sure they can tell you all the wonderful things we're doing.
All right, so please introduce yourself and.
I'm prepared. I got everything written down.
You're ready to go? All right, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. My name is George Feldman. I'm the Chair of the City's Library Advisory Board. I would like to introduce my board to you. Margaret Newton, Joel Barsky. Oh my God, Thomas Devlin, Marsha Levine, sorry. Ellen Jones is not here this evening. We currently have a few open board positions. If anybody in the audience would like to join us, we'd love to have you. On behalf of the board, I want to say thank you to Mr. Craig Clark for his leadership over the past year. We wish to thank him much success in his new position. Also, there's been many promotions and new titles, et cetera, within the library organization. We wanted to congratulate everyone with their hard work and wish you too much success in the future endeavors. We look forward to working with you all in the coming year, Mr. Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. The Library Board was proud to represent our city's library as we were awarded the Florida Library Association's, Florida Library Association's 2022 Library of the Year for the state of Florida. That's a huge thing, and I'm sure everybody's talked about it and appreciated it. As a board, we were only directly involved in this honor, but we recognize how and why this honor happened. Our past Director Craig Clark, our current Director Jeannie Taylor, and the team have given us the ship to ride on with smooth waters below and the future clear with the ideas and initiatives on the horizon. We will now endeavor to explain what we did as a board and how we want to influence with our great new ideas for programs and like. Our goal is to always support our great city and its residents. I'd like to now turn this over, presentation over to the board member, Marsha Levine, behind me, who will take you through some of the accomplishments the advisory board oversaw this past year.
I do have the presentation up.
All right, it is attached to the agenda backup if that's helpful.
Okay, do you want me to just go through it?
Let's just, yeah.
Okay. City Man, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Assistant City Manager and City Commissioners, my name is Marsha Levine and I'm a board member. And we're just going to go through each slide. So for those of you that have it and want to just read along, I'm just going to go through some of our accomplishments. And I am very proud to be a board member of the City Library Board. If any of you ever want to find me if I'm missing, I'm usually in the Florida room of the library. I love that room. I love the library and I love being on this board. It is really an honor and we have a really hardworking board. It's different from some of the other boards, but it's really, really interesting and to see the accomplishments of what people on the board, in the library do and what we oversee on a monthly basis. So I'm going to go through some of the accomplishments of the library. Our Career Online High School. So without the slides and sort of the summary of it, I'm just going to go through it quickly. The Boynton Beach City Library offers a Career Online High School program to earn a fully accredited high school diploma along with a career certification. The requirements are that they have a library card, are nineteen years of age or older, and that they pass a two-week prerequisite course. The program is online learning and students can work anytime that is convenient for their schedule. Students are allowed up to eighteen months to complete the diploma credits. Previously earned high school credits can be transferred in to help students finish sooner. Diplomas have been earned by eighteen people since the program began. There are currently twelve students working in the program. This program has not only changed lives in our community, but has also contributed in our local economy. Second slide is our collection department, development policy, and library bill of rights. Given the recent hot topic issue of challenging books for censure or removal, at the library director's suggestion, the board unanimously approved a collection development policy, which is accessible if anybody would like to read through that. It's available through the city's website. The collection development policy is a guide that clearly establishes the city's responsibility of the library for collecting, acquiring, organizing, and retaining materials within the collection. The policy clarifies that the main goal of the library is to provide a broad and balanced collection using the space and resources available by building collections that are responsive, relevant, and inspiring for the community. There's a lot, a lot more that I really urge you to look on the website for. I'm not going to go through it all, but that is the summary of the collection policy. And the library bill of rights, just in case anybody wants to know, was originally adopted by the American Library Association in nineteen thirty-nine and was amended multiple times throughout the year. The next slide is our summer reading program. The summer reading program encourages young readers to continue to read throughout the summer. The programs and prizes are sponsored by the Friends of the Boynton Beach City Library. And for those of you that are not familiar with the Friends of the City Library, the Friends of the Library is a volunteer group that provides fundraising and support for the library through their activities program. And the summer reading program is a public library initiative that encourages young readers to continue to read through the summer even when the school is out. Young readers include kids aged five to twelve and teens aged thirteen to seventeen. Parents can also sign up their pre-readers so long as they track the reading materials. The next slide is our adult reading club. This focuses on keeping adults interested in reading and involved with the library. Programs and prizes are also sponsored by our Friends of the Boynton Beach City Library. And the library's Adult Reading Club focuses on keeping adults interested in reading. And this reading club, which meets from January through March to include our snowbird population, has been going strong for about fifteen years. Members read books of their own choosing. This year, the library registered a hundred and twenty library patients in the program, excuse me, library patrons in the program. Each participant that completed the program, each received a library branded insulated cup. The next slide is our public technology trainer. I don't know if any of you on the dais or in our audience has taken advantage of some of our programs, but they are really, really fantastic. And if you haven't, I really encourage you to look online and sign up for some of the programs because they're really, really incredible. In 2021, the library received an ARPA grant in the amount of ninety-three thousand eighty-four dollars from the Florida Division of Library Services, which is a state's grants program. With those grant dollars, the library was able to hire a part-time public technology trainer. Brianna Teible was hired in February 2022, and she quickly designed and began teaching a very robust training program that includes classes about small business resources, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, protect yourself against scammers, spammers, hackers. I mean, it's just really kind of incredible. Margaret Newton, who is a board member, and George Feldman, our board Chair, have participated in several public technology programs and non-public technology programs. Some of the tech programs that she's taught have been what is a QR code, cutting the cable cord, and even information on the now, of course, very popular, what is ChatGPT? She found that the public technology offered by the library has enhanced her technical knowledge and has opened an awareness of resources that she did not know existed. Ms. Newton was especially interested in the ChatGPT instruction that introduced her to the virtual assistant Gal Friday, and she is looking forward to using AI, which is artificial intelligence, to help answer her questions. Next slide is our banned book discussion. On October twenty-sixth, 2022, Craig Clark, who was then our library director, and Lindsay Carton, who was a library board member at the time, attended Banned Books, First Amendment and Legal Limits to the Freedom to Read, presented by the Lawyers for Literacy Committee. The panelists speaking at this Lunch and Learn presentation included Sean Fahey Esquire, an attorney for the Palm Beach County School Board Attorney, and James Larson, an intellectual resources manager at the Palm Beach County Library System. At the October twenty-sixth board meeting, Ms. Carton discussed with the board some of the topics addressed at the banned books presentation. First and foremost, no books have been banned to date, and the banning of books would entail the suspension of book sales via online and in-store purchases. And if you have any other questions about the banned books, we have a lot more. But the library is very open to suggestions from our patrons regarding our library's selection. And at this time in the presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Thomas Devlin, who is a board member, and he is going to talk to you about our Civil Air Patrol programming and exhibit slide.
I'm Tom Devlin, a board member. I would like to first point out that when, when I came on, it was the eightieth anniversary of the Civil Air Patrol, which was formed just days before Pearl Harbor. And there were three locations for those, two in New Jersey and one right here in Palm Beach County. And they helped protect the shipping lanes that were coming up. German U-boats were sinking shipping, the cargo shipping. They just felt it was fair game. The war hadn't actually been declared. And so the group was put together as an experiment. And they went out and initially spotted, they would spot a U-boat, Navy plane would come and they'd be gone. So they were outfitted with bombs and grenades and other devices. And when they spotted them, they dropped it. And within three months, the Germans gave up the East Coast of the United States. And as a result of that, they, they put in eighteen more on the East Coast. But the one here in, just over on Hypolexal Road, is the only, is the only original building standing, and it still operates. And it has migrated, migrated to other programs, which I'll talk about in a minute. But when it came, I spoke to the library and I was very surprised. They had, they already had two copies of Puddle Jumpers of Palm Beach County. And they, it was a documentary on those original people who flew, you know, the missions. And in addition to that, with the help of the Palm Beach County resources, the archivist was able to put together a Civil Air Patrol presentation up on the second floor of the library. They also put up on Facebook the anniversary and come to the library and check out the videos. And finally, there was a suggestion that some of the staff become aerospace educators. It is, the, the staff member pays a thirty-five-dollar fee and that's good for their life. And they can request and they get kits and program information from grade one through six. And they get kits and the first, so our new library director was the one who actually registered. And then the first kit she got was a robot with a programming mat. So I, I hope that more of the staff can join up, get different packages and be able to use them in the different programs. So they've got information from grade one through six and they, which come with little projects. And they've got projects from six to twelve. So with that, I'm through as far as the city's help or libraries help with the Civil Air Patrol.
Thank you, Tom. And Marsha, was there anyone else from your group? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. I just have one more slide. Thank you so much for indulging us. The last slide is our economic development initiatives. And again, I just want to say, if any of you have not been to the Creative Edge Studio, that's another place that you could find me. We are really, really, very, very fortunate in the city to have the Creative Edge Studio. It is chock full of really, really exciting tools and classes. And if you're not ready to dive in, just make an appointment to go and take a tour of the Creative Edge Studio because it's really, really, really exciting. But the Creative Edge Studio, for those of you that don't know in the audience or wherever, the Creative Edge Studio serves as the maker space within the library equipped through the support of a grant. The studio is furnished with various tools such as a Glowforge laser cutter, wide format printer, three D printer and scanner, a sublimation printer, a cricket machine. For those of you that don't know what a cricket machine is, it makes phenomenal cards and T-shirts and a lot of things that you'd pay a lot of money for that you could make in the library. Sewing machines, embroidery machines, and much more. The studio's objective extends beyond inspiring creativity. It aims to transform that creativity into viable small businesses, thereby contributing value to the city of Boynton. And one more is our virtual zone. At present, we are collaborating with the economic development team to create an extensive resource hub for small businesses in the city of Boynton. This collaborative effort engages support from our public technology trainer, the Creative Edge Studio, and the virtual zone. And this is located within the teen area. This has a lot of virtual, a lot of virtual equipment there. And small businesses will have the opportunity to utilize the virtual zone in the morning, allowing them to produce podcasts, radio advertisements, and more. We eagerly anticipate the positive impact that this initiative will bring to our community. The library in summation continues to apply for grants to support the economic initiative. That concludes our report by the Boynton Beach City Library Advisory Board and some of the things that we have to date overseen as a board. Thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, you know, you could let me or anybody on the board know. Would you like, okay.
If you guys think or thought that the library was boring back in the day, there's so much going on, the community is thriving because of our library. And I want to thank everybody and it's a pleasure to serve on it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. And let me just say, I completely agree with you. It is far from boring. As Ms. Taylor knows and Mr. Clark, I take all sorts of people there to tours, to tour them around. And it is always a pleasure to show them our three D printers, the cricket machine. Our library is doing so much more than a standard library. So thank you to all of you on our advisory board and also to our staff for making it the best library in Palm Beach County. Let me turn now to my colleagues, Commissioner, let's begin on my left with Commissioner Kelly. Do you have any questions or comments for the advisory board?
No, just thank you for this presentation. It's always nice for the public and for us to hear what's going on. My only question would be, what is, what are some of the things that you're looking forward to in the future in the coming year of some extra initiatives or some things that you're working on?
Yes, I, you know, the board is interesting. We oversee a lot of the library's initiatives. So as a board, we don't come up with a lot of initiatives on our own. So I would probably have to engage with Jeannie to find out what the library is. So at this point, I would have to say, we're probably going to continue with, it's not that we are doing fundraising or parties, like things like that on some of the other boards that I have sat on. So I would just probably say, we're going to continue with a lot more of the training, a lot more of our tours, a lot more of collaboration within the city departments. I couldn't say right now, we're engaging to do this event, things like that. But, you know, we're, we're just always suggesting programs, what can we do for the, you know, technology, what we hear out in the community that they want to do, you know, maybe like the ChatGPT, we came up with that and she was on that right away. Why don't you, go ahead?
The one key thing is promoting the projects that we already have so that we can grow the base of users within the city. And, you know, reach more people and accomplish more of what was, what was already said.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's important that we, we're letting the public know what is available in our library, that it's not just full of books anymore and that we have, just like the mayor said, it's, it's way more fun and exciting than, than the library has ever been. So I think it's, it's great to, to hear from you that volunteers are so excited to be on this board and participate within our. on this board and participate within our library. And so I just I thank you for your commitment, too.
And in answer to your question about what we're looking forward to, I have a teen who is very involved in a number of programs, and she likes money. And one of the programs that we have suggested and are looking to have happen is to teaching our teens how to not only build a business, but how to shop and work with money. Now, that comes because she's involved. I would never have known unless she had mentioned it. And there are a lot of teens who are here. I know sometimes it's a little disruptive. There are a lot of children, et cetera, and so forth. But it's through the children that much of the information is disseminated about this library, starting with pre K on up. And the little ones outside in front of the tree, have you ever seen them? And their parents and others, they're our best ambassadors.
Thank you.
All right, Marcia, you gonna wrap it up? That was that was it? Oh, I'm yeah, for for this Commissioner Hay, let's go on to the next person.
My questions have been been answered by just a few comments. I see that you guys have really made some improvements. I've been slacking off of going to the library as often as I used to. I really like to see more of the the Creative Edge Studio. So I look, look, see me in there. I often told, I tell Jeannie and Craig that, and you guys, we have one of the best libraries around here. And I'm very proud of the work that you guys are doing. And you just need to pull frog that won't prey his own pond. Okay, you guys are doing an outstanding job. I like the idea of working with our youth and getting them more involved with the aeronautical engineering piece from start to finish. That's very exciting. And I want to know more about the Civic Air Patrol. I'll I'll be talking more to you, okay, about that. I'd like to know more about the history on that. So just keep doing the work that you guys are doing. Outstanding. Very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Vice Vice Mayor stepped out. Let's turn to Commissioner Cruz.
I think enough's been said by my colleagues, but thank you all for the work you do. Thank you for participating in the city where you live and joining a board. I think that's one of the best things that you can do, and we thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Let's give them another round of applause. The next item on the agenda is three B. It is to announce a system-wide free chlorination of the water distribution system. The city of Boynton Beach Utilities Department will perform a system-wide free chlorination for routine water distribution system maintenance from January fourth, twenty twenty four to January twenty fourth. Excuse me, I read that wrong, from January fourth to January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. If you would like more information, you can contact the Water Quality Division at five six one seven four two six nine six four. Again, the Water Quality Division is five six one seven four two six nine six four. The next item on the agenda, three C, is a video presentation to hear about this initiative from staff. It's called hashtag Boynton Gives Back. And do we have that video ready? All right, I see something. Here we go.
Mayor, can I speak to this?
Absolutely.
Catherine Montos, Assistant City Manager. So I'm just really proud of this project coming to fruition. It's just a branding effort to highlight all of the amazing things that happen across the departments in our city, from the Police Department and the Fire Department, our Utilities Department. All of our departments give back in some way, and this Boynton Gives Back, I want it to be a hashtag that goes viral, but I'm not that popular on social media, so we'll see how it goes. But I'm really excited because this is just an effort to kind of brand the city, the staff. This is also going to encapsulate the 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 volunteers that we have that come to our events, that volunteer on our advisory boards. We have an event planned for April. I believe it's April eleventh, but it's a little bit of a teaser for all of our volunteers and advisory board members. We're going to have an appreciation event for them, and so we'll be getting the word out on that. And this is really just an effort to tie together all of the incredible things that are already happening. I've also been working with our H R department to streamline our volunteer program and make it a lot easier because I got some feedback from some of our residents that the volunteer onboarding process is long and cumbersome. So we're trying to streamline that, and it's just, this is a little bit of a teaser. It's a hey, this is the end of the year. It's the holidays. We're excited. But come January, get ready to to start volunteering community. So we're excited about it, and we'll be getting the word out. So I want to just thank our marketing team and our events team for being supportive of this and helping us get the word out. There's just, I say it all the time, the staff's probably tired of hearing me say it, but there are so many amazing things happening in our city, and our job is to tell that story. And so this is one of the ways that we're going to be doing that. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody that's put in all the hard work to make this possible. And we look forward to seeing this development time. Anything from my colleagues on this item? All right, we're going to move on. The next portion of the agenda is public audience. Remember, the rules are three minutes per person. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or even in the audience. This is a time to be heard, and so we will be taking notes, and our staff will respond, and we will respond thereafter, but not here this evening. After we have heard from all persons in the chambers, that is the last time that we will take digital hands raised for those of you listening online. All right, so we have two podiums, and let me switch to the timer. You know the drill. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon. Mac McCray, eight oh six Northwest Fourth Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. My first item of business is I'd like to recognize our former mayor, Mayor Jerry Taylor, who I had a privilege to serve in here. He's in our audience tonight. I feel like at least he needs to be recognized, you know. You all don't get recognition. I'd like to say Mayor Taylor from District Two and the citizens of Boynton, sir, thank you for your service. I'd like to offer a suggestion. I'd like to offer a suggestion to commissioners, when you all have given us information, say that this was donated, that was donated, that it'd be better if you all would quantify what was donated monetarily, whatever to like the schools, what schools receive what. We just want to make sure that our schools in District Two will receive it our fair share. The next item of business that I'm really up here for is to talk about the cemetery. I'd like to say to our deputy city manager, Ms. Andrew Mike, sir, thank you for keeping your word and presenting today the plans on what we can do. And I'm glad you gave plans to the commissioner for District Two. Sir, I'd like to offer a suggestion as a certified funeral service practitioner to practice in here in the state of Florida. Out of the state of Florida, we have about seven thousand funeral directors that embalmers. We only have certified funeral service practitioners. There's only about forty of us. And standing before you, I serve as one of those. I'd like to say that the next thing that you all need to do, sir, is contact the funeral homes in this area that will be that will be using those cemeteries. Set up a meeting. I'm willing to come to your meetings. Make sure that your commissioner, that represent District Two is there. Here from the funeral homes will be bringing families there to utilize those cemeteries first. After you have covered all those grounds, then it'd be best to go out there and present it to the citizens that will be utilizing it. I recognize that this is just a short-term fix, but please don't forget, we still need a long-term fix. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next public comment speaker. Coming up to the podium. And state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Sandra Watson. Good evening. I'm just representing tonight the Girl Scout Troop twenty four five fourteen, and we just wanted to come and say thank you to the commissioners, the commission, the police department for their contribution to us. So we just have a little token of our appreciation. We call it hometown heroes. So we consider all of you guys as hometown heroes, and we have just a little bit of something for you guys. If you have any nut allergies, then trade with somebody else. All right, and here's here's a couple of our parents and leaders, brand-new parents and leaders. They might want to say something also, so we might run over a little bit. Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Danielle Young, and I just wanted to say the Assistant City Manager, right? We can help you with your Boynton Gives Back initiative and marketing. That's something that we're looking to take on as well with our troop. We are one of the largest troops in our service area, and we are the most diverse. So we reach. We can help you with your Boynton Gives Back hashtag.
And you guys just come and take all of your goodies. These are from our fall product sale. Hometown Heroes.
All right, Ms. Watson, were you finished with the speaking?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you so much. Could we give them a round of applause, please? Anybody? All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next public comment speaker and state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Evangeline Ward, fifteen eighteen North Sea Crest Boulevard. And I am a native Boyntonian. Been here all my life. As I said, my grandparents migrated here and came from Panama City, Florida in nineteen twenty three. So I know the ins and outs, the ups, the downs, the highs and lows. And I want you to know in the midst of everything, I love Boynton Beach. And as former Commissioner McCray said, we thank you that you've heard our voices concerning the cemetery. And we thank you for the temporary solution, but we really want permanent. And I'm very active in the community and not only active in the community, when I'm even out shopping in a grocery store, there's a lot of people in this city that don't know, they they don't know we don't have burial spaces. I was in the laundry room today, you know, doing certain things when your washer break down, so you got to go down to the laundry mat, okay? And different ones, I spoke to them, elderly people. I says, do you realize you don't have burial sites in this city? I even let them know originally, the Little League baseball field was, you know, incremented that we're supposed to be there. That's supposed to be our graveyard. And the words out of their mouth was, Little League can be anywhere, but keep the graveyard where it is and extend it. Because we all have family members there, and those grave sites have been there so long. So I'm pleading with you tonight, you know, because my husband's there. My mom's there. My grandparents are there. And I don't want to be cremated so I can have a little spot to be in my husband's plot. In fact, I want to be so close that I can holler at him, okay? So my thing tonight, yeah, I'm just letting you know. I want to be so close that I can holler at him, okay? So my thing is, we thank you for what you're doing, but until we get permanent, we're going to aggravate you to death. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next public comment speaker.
I don't think this is on. Cindy Falca de Carrado. I first like to thank Angela Cruz, the commissioner there. She had donated some turkeys. I am a minister, and I was able to bless ten families. And some families weren't able to have a turkey, and they were very blessed to get them. So thank you for that in your program. Thank you for reaching out to me to do that. I also wanted to bring up in regards to the water quality. I know we have something here about testing our waters, but we were supposed to have that tested, I think several months ago. It was mentioned about the fluoride and what's going on into our waters. I also heard something that was quite disturbing to me in regards to the fact that our water meters at our homes don't work. They haven't worked for years, but they keep going up in price. I don't know that, like I said, I've heard it. I've had people tell me about it, and I would like to know why if this is really happening. Why are we being charged for, first of all, water that keeps going up that we don't, our meters, none of our meters work? This is a shame. I did also want to mention a few other things. I do want to thank some people that are on the dais who have been diligent, looking into the neighborhoods and catching people with fentanyl and child trafficking and things that are going on in my community only three blocks away from my home. It's pretty scary to know that all this garbage is going on right around me. I know you talk about wonderful things of Boynton Beach, and as we've heard, a roof fell in the last couple of months ago when someone's working on it, and we have these situations of drug dealers. We have child trafficking. We have prostitution. We've got all kinds of stuff going on in this city that no one's talking about, but it is affecting the neighbors, and it is affecting all of us who live in this community. I just wanted to bring that up, and I want to thank those who are diligently catching these criminals and stopping sex trafficking and really keeping their eyes open on what's going on in this community. Because all that glitters is not gold. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
All right, next person.
Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. First of all, I want to say we need to be tackling the excess cars on the streets issue. Adam is fabulous, and Hood is usually in my neighborhood, but I still have problems with cars parking all over the street, blocking the street, you know, it obviously becomes an issue like when my neighbor's house caught on fire, and there's cars all over the place blocking the street. So let's get on that again. I think that's something, in case you've forgotten, there's no more cars allowed than the number of bedrooms in the house. So let's be enforcing that. Second of all, I think Evangeline brought up an issue. We have never actually voted on what we want to call ourselves in this city, and maybe we should. I personally call myself a Boynton Beecher. Some people call themselves Boyntonites. Others call themselves Boyntonians. Maybe that's something we should actually look into, is actually having some kind of survey or some kind of vote on what we want to be called. But as far as I know, we've never been called anything specific. People just make assumptions, and they're wrong. Next up, I want to say that we need a palm tree ban desperately. I think this storm for the last week and a half and palm fronds everywhere, coconuts everywhere, damage all over is another reason that we should be looking at banning palm trees. If you have forgotten, go take a look at your sustainability. The report they put out that talks all the reasons why how palm trees are horrible and, you know, they're expensive to maintain, and they cause problems, and this last week has been perfect evidence of why we need to be on the forefront with the city of Miami Beach getting rid of palm trees. Next up, because yes, I have a big list tonight, sorry. Welcome to our new Chamber of Commerce, the the Boynton Beach Official Chamber had their ribbon cutting this evening, so we are back to having a Chamber of Commerce. I know we've been without one for a while since ours phased in with Boca Raton. On on that point, I understand, I guess, the old chamber that phased in with Boca left their stuff here at the city. There's several pictures of my dad when he created the original, one with a couple of his business friends. I want those pictures or I want scans of them. I've reached out to the Boca Chamber. They haven't responded. So if you know where the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce stuff is from the old chamber that no longer exists, I would either love the pictures or love scans of the ones with my dad when they created the chamber. And I want to say, one of my neighbors just put a black roof on. How is that allowed in this city in the South? Everything should be nothing but white roofs. I think I've given you more than enough evidence on why we should be a white roof-only city, and maybe you should be examining that. And I will finish up with Merry Christmas to everyone and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right, next public comment speaker.
Good evening. Barbara Reedy. I come bearing gifts tonight. It's appropriate to have gifts right before Christmas, I guess. The Historical Society has purchased copies of a book about Bernard Thomas, who is a local treasure, some of you may know. Adam, could you assist me? You guys get copies, too, and they weigh a ton. Bernard Thomas was actually born in Wyoming, and he married Betty Thomas, who is also a local treasure. You may be aware of a park named after her. But he did a lot of painting of out west, the scenery, the horses, the cows. And then he and Betty moved to Boynton Beach in nineteen fifty three. And then his And then his genre of painting changed to sea and boats and ocean and fish and things. So the Historical Society, I wear two hats. Y'all are aware of that, okay? I chair your city board, historic board, but I'm first vice president at the Historical Society. So we've purchased these books. And I thought that I would be Santa Claus tonight. The Girl Scouts beat me to it. But that's all right. I'll, I'll take a second seat to the Girl Scouts anytime. So the Historic Resources Board here, this one is, this is Andrew's, I think. Concerned not just with buildings, as the title indicates, it's historic resources, okay? And you can tell by the things that we've put on our local register that it's not just buildings that we're interested in. And Bernard Thomas and Conrad Pecel and, you know, people that lived here and contributed to the fabric of our city, our local treasures. And they're considered historic resources as well. So I will echo Susan at this point and say Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy, happy everything. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
I wanted to remind everybody, Historical Society is doing a Highwayman Art Show and Sale on January the 20th from 11 to 3. It's free for all to attend. The actual artists will be here to sell their paintings, the Highwayman Art. If anyone wants to know what Highwayman Art is, I'll be happy to tell you. I only have 21 seconds, but it's another piece of Boynton Beach's fabric as they drove up and down federal highway selling their artwork out of the trunks of their cars. That's why Susan's dad's office had five or six Highwayman Art paintings in the, in their office and gas stations and hotels and.
Thank you.
Everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it's much lighter.
All right. Last call for in-person public comment speakers. Seeing no one else, we have one person approaching the podium. Now is the time. This is last call, after which we will go to those online. All right. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
I'm Anita Gabriel. I'm living in 121 Southwest Third Court. This is, thanks for this opportunity. I'm, I face a lot of problem with the medication which I'm taking. Please kindly help me in that regard. Thank you, one and all. I want to give my small gift to everybody. I, please, I want to pass over this for everybody here.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We're going to move on now to Mr. McNolley. But did you intend to speak? This is last call. All right.
Hi, Ernest McNolley, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, also known as Harbor Hall Inlet Club. I always like to say that, that we bought here in October of 2020. And the expectations of what we bought and what we got are very different. And I don't think that there's a good forum to talk about all the problems. At least, I don't know any in the city. The only thing I heard of once that I thought was a good idea was to have an independent citizen oversight board with subpoena power apart from the city. But you seem to have decided not to, and you want to do one that is internal. And I don't know in the country, any city that ever had success with a self-contract or internal oversight of itself. The way you get at issues is independent, not associated, not paid, volunteer with subpoena power. And why do I say that? For example, I'm holding in my hand, I'm spending tens of thousands of dollars to get all facts, records, all documents about issues that I feel are serious with the city. And yet, there's no venue, there's no venue to, to, to talk about this. I mean, I'd like to say that not too many people realize when a city like this has 85,000 known people and probably a 50,000 unknown people. And then you find out that there's serious fentanyl going on for decades and, and just killing a lot of people. And everyone knows, in the world, knows that wherever there's fentanyl, there's human trafficking. There's problems with children, abuse. It, it all goes together, goes together with organized crime from out of the country, into the country. And yet, and yet, there's no venue in this city to talk about it. And yet, wherever you live, if you have a window and you look out your window in Boynton Beach, there's open crime right in front of you, right in your front lawn, right on your street, right in your own building. And you can't seem to get any help. You can't seem to get anything. So I think without an oversight.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on now to those online. I'm going to ask IT, how many people do we have with their digital hands raised to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public audience is now concluded. We're going to move on to the next section of the agenda, which is administrative. This is about the appointments to city advisory boards. I'm going to pull up the list, and we have several applicants for several positions. We're going to go in order. The very first advisory board is the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. There is one open position. It is a regular position for a two-year term. We have several applicants and it is my nomination. I would like to nominate Ms. Lisha Roundtree for this position. Is there a second for that nomination? I heard a second. I believe that was Vice Mayor who made the second first. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Lisha Roundtree to the CRA Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to building boards of adjustments and appeals. There are no applicants, but we have several positions open. Moving on to Employees Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Once again, we have no applicants. Education and Youth Advisory Board. We have one applicant and we have two regular positions and one student. This position, the regular position, is Commissioner Hayes' nomination. Commissioner Hayes, would you like to make a nomination?
Yes. What's the name?
I believe it's, I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name correctly, but it is Gabrielle.
Nominate Gabrielle.
That might be right.
Second.
All right. We have a nomination for Gabrielle and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion to appoint Gabrielle to the regular position, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the Library Board. This appointment is for regular position and this nomination goes to Vice Mayor Turkin. Vice Mayor?
I'll make the appointment for Stephanie Coliani.
All right. Is there a second for that?
Second.
And we have a second coming from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, the ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. For the Recreation and Parks Board, there are no applicants. We do have a regular position and an alternate open. Moving on to the Senior Advisory Board, I see that there are three regular positions open. This particular nomination is with me. I'd like to nominate Mary Jane Pessine to the regular position. Is there a second? The second came from Vice Mayor. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to all of the new appointments this evening. We look forward to your hard work and what you will do together as a team. That concludes that item. Let me turn now to the next portion of the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Let me turn to my colleagues and ask, is there anything under consent that you would like to pull? Let me turn on my right this time. Let's begin with Commissioner Cruz.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 6D.
Sixty-one second. Let me just, what happened to my pen? Here it is. 6D, this is, okay, the proposed resolution R23-185. Any other requests, Commissioner?
No, that's all.
All right. What about you, Vice Mayor?
6C.
6C. All right. Let's turn now to Commissioner Hayes. Any request?
No, 6C has already been pulled.
All right. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we have two items that were pulled, 6C and 6D. First, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda? I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin. Is there a second from Commissioner Cruz? All those in favor of approving the remainder of Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Let's address these items in order, beginning with 6C. Proposed Resolution Number R23-184. A resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida approving and authorizing the city manager to sign a developers agreement with Isram Riverwalk LLC for shared cost for the construction of force main improvements for Riverwalk Plaza located at 630 East Bull Bright Road and providing an effective date. Let me turn to our deputy city manager, Andrew Mack, to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this item's on the agenda to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement between us and Riverwalk. That agreement is simply, I think there's some confusion out in the community that there's, that we're paying them, but this is actually us reimbursed them, Riverwalk reimbursing us for a portion of their fair share cost for lift station enforcement that was installed as part of that project. There also was some discussion about the mangroves that were south of the Riverwalk project. Again, with this item, but that's a separate item that's not included with this project. I did reach out to Isram Group and to inquire about, previously, there was some, basically a verbal commitment or a gentleman's commitment that they would, when they got their permitting done from Army Corps and the project was coming in, that they would look at dealing a portion of the mangroves to the city to help facilitate a public boardwalk, which they did allow an easement on their property, the current property where Riverwalk is along the water. So they were looking, we were looking to just continue that easement further south and improve that area so that the public could enjoy the mangroves and the intercoastal water. So that is, I did speak to them. They did say that that still is on the table. They didn't commit to it one way or the other at this point. But as that project does come back to the city, that is something that we can further talk about and put as a requirement or condition of approval.
So let me do a follow-up question. And I know that is not the particular topic of this agenda item. But since you did raise it, let me ask, in the meantime, is there any activity on that mangrove location?
I can let Adam speak to that. But I do believe they have got their permits and they are doing some activity.
When you say activity, what, what kind? What does that mean?
I have not verified that myself. I know maybe Adam Temple, the Assistant City Manager, can speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Adam Temple, Assistant City Manager. So we did send staff out there a few weeks ago when we were initially notified that there were some activity taking place out there. They are there, they have authorization from the Army Corps of Engineers. And so they are currently operating under their authorization. And our staff had also reached out to Florida Department of Environmental Protection that same day and spoke to a couple of their representatives. And they were looking, they were looking to make sure that whatever they are doing is in accordance with their approvals.
All right. So I'm very, very tempted to discuss this. However, it's not the agenda item. And so I'd like for us to move on. However, this is a conversation I'd like to have. And so, you know, if there is an agreement with my colleagues to amend the agenda, to have this discussion, we can add it under new business. If that is all right with my colleagues, the topic is the mangroves themselves. I just have a few more questions, if that's all right with my colleagues. If not, we can have it at a future meeting, but I do have questions either today or the following meeting.
Mayor, I 100% agree with you. I think I would love to have that conversation today.
Okay.
Agreed.
I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. So the motion that I'm requesting is to amend the agenda to add a discussion topic, which is the mangroves just south of the Isram property there at Riverwalk, to be added under new agenda. May I have that motion to amend the agenda? All right. I have a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second to add that as a discussion topic. Thank you so much. All those in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We'll discuss that then, when we arrive to that item. All right. Was there anything else specifically about 6C? Anything else to be added, Deputy City Manager?
No, sir.
All right. And Commissioner, I know you were interested in this item as well.
I'm good.
You're good? All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve item 6C?
I'm moved.
We have a motion that came, coming from Commissioner Hayes. I heard a second from Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor approving item 6C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. So we have now concluded 6C. We're now moving on to item 6D, Proposed Resolution R23-185. And this is a very lengthy title. A resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a Florida Department of Environmental Protection Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Agreement Application to Develop the Water Treatment Plans, Planning and Design Projects Intended to Address Drinking Water Compliance with Proposed Regulations Related to Emerging Contaminants in the Amount of $5,167,179. Execute All Documents Associated with the Loan. Accept the Loan and Execute the Loan Agreement Subject to Approval by the City Attorney, Providing for Conflict Separability and Providing an Effective Date. I said that very quickly. Let's turn now, unless you'd like to introduce the item or should we directly? All right, Dr. Calcutt, if you'd like to open this item.
Hunam Calcutt, Utilities Director. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, member of the, members of the audience, city staff, Deputy City Manager. Just very pleased to bring this item to the commission for approval. And we go into the presentation. The, this is going to, I'm going to introduce a little bit what the State Revolving Fund is and what we're doing with it. So Florida Department of Environmental Protection has a state revolving fund program. And this is funded through federal government and money comes to states and is dispersed out. And usually, it's a very low interest loan program. And it is for drinking water as well as for what's called clean water. The clean water part is for stormwater as well as sewer. So around $370 million available annually in Florida for this. And this particular loan that we are applying for is really for the water treatment plants. So just briefly talking about we, the city has two water treatment plants. The East Water Treatment Plant as well as the West Water Treatment Plant. The East Plant is an older plant. It's a 24 million gallon per day plant with, and has conventional treatment processes. And West Treatment Plant has nano filtration process, treatment process. And there are certain emerging contaminants like PFAS, PFOS, PFO. You might have heard of some of these terms that are per and polyfluorally, fluoralkyl substances that can be very dangerous to human, for human consumption. And even though the water department, what are the same industry, this is a pass-through for us. It's nothing that we are producing, but we are going to be required to treat this. And what we're doing is we are asking for, we're going for a loan program. And it's actually not even a loan. It's a principle of forgiveness because the emerging contaminants portion, this was a bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed from federal government, gave money out to states that could be totally loan forgiveness. So we will be getting this money for, without having to pay anything back. And it is going to be, it's still called a loan. So I know it can be a little bit misleading. But it is going to be forgiveness in the sense that not, the city won't have to pay anything. The request for inclusion for initial application was submitted to Florida Department of Environmental Protection. On November 8th, they had a meeting in which they look at whatever's been submitted to them and they gave a priority list. And our project did get selected. The project is for looking at what kind of alternative treatments can be done at our East Water Treatment Plant? What kind of options are available for us for treating these emerging contaminants? And once the planning document is, that's the first step, that we're going to get a planning document passed through and get money for that. And then after that, it'll be a design project. And we are asking for 5.4 million total. Initially, it's going to be 5.1 million. The 400,000 is going to be planning. The rest is going to be for design. And for the 5.1 million is going, they've already. And for the five point one million is going, they've already, DEP has already approved that priority. And so, that, we will be getting that money allocated to the city as soon as the four hundred dollars used, used for planning. And the rest of the money for, so we totally, we applied for five point four. And because they're giving us five point one right now, because that's what's available, so we will go back to DEP and request for more money in the subsequent meetings, and they've already told us that we should be able to get that. So, we are excited to get this. The funding process is, did I move forward? Hold on one second. So, the funding process is after the commission approves the loan agreement negotiation and the mayor can sign that loan application, we will be able to sit down with DEP, get a loan agreement in place, and get the four hundred thousand for working on a planning document. Once the planning document's done, we'll be able to apply for a design money. And we will, what we'll do is we'll look at a couple of different treatment options for these emerging contaminants. And based on whatever design is, is works out best for us and what's recommended, we will, the city will go for that treatment and apply for a construction loan in the future. If there are any questions on this, I can answer this. We are being proactive in getting this money so that the city can actually really start looking at what kind of treatment is needed. We will be required, all cities, all municipalities will be required to have treatment in place for these drinking water contaminants that are coming up. Any questions?
Dr. Calcutta, thank you so much. We will turn now to my colleagues for any questions. Commissioner Cruz, you were the one who requested this item. Let's begin with you.
Thank you to our management and to Dr. Calcutta, as well as every single member of your team who worked on this. I know a lot of times the people that do the work are not always at the meeting, so I want to appreciate every single one of you, not only for planning it and thinking about it, but actually implementing it and making it happen. It really means a lot to us. Especially the fact that it's infrastructure and it's federal dollars that are not going to come from our budget. So, thank you so much. These are great, this is a great opportunity, very happy to see it. And especially because it is a forgivable loan, we will not be paying this money. It's free dollars. So, that's it. Just happy, good things, infrastructure planning ahead, being proactive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, was there, did you have anything? Commissioner Hay and Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I had my agenda review and, you know, just thank you for being proactive. I think it's important that we're, you know, when's the last time we had to reevaluate our, you know, contaminant searches and, you know, and I know the, the federal government is staying on top of it, and I'm glad that we're staying even further on top of it too. So, thank you.
All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve item six D?
I moved.
We have a motion, and I heard the second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving item six D say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes consent agenda. We're moving on to the next portion, which is consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars. Let's begin on my left. Does anybody have any requests? Nothing from my left. Anything from my right? With that, may I have a motion to approve entirety? All right, the motion came from Commissioner Cruz, the second came from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor of approving the entirety of consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We are now entering into the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item eight A is proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-two. This is a second reading, which means we will have public comments. I'm going to turn now to our city clerk.
Mayor, this is the proposed ordinance number twenty-three zero two-two, second reading, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, chapter two, land development process, article six, impact and selected fees to amend section two to adopt a comprehensive impact fee schedule for police facilities, adopting an impact fee study for police facilities, amending section nine to create an impact fee schedule for police facilities, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you so much. I believe this is the same presentation as we've seen before. Is there anyone on the days that would like to discuss it again or run through the slides again? I'm seeing none, so let's turn now to public comments. If you would like to speak specifically on items eight A, now is the time to approach the podium, again, specifically on item eight A. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'm going to turn now to IT. Does anybody have their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, thank you so much. With that, public comment on this item is now closed. And now I'll ask for a motion to approve item eight A.
Show move.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Turkin, and I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. Let me turn now again to the city clerk for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passing unanimously.
Thank you so much. We're moving on to item eight B. This is proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-three. Once again, second reading, city attorney.
This is proposed ordinance twenty-three dash zero two-three, second reading, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the Boynton Beach administrative amendments to the eighth edition twenty-twenty-three of the Florida Building Code, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you so much. Would anyone on the days like to hear the presentation again? Seeing no requests, we're going to turn now to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak, speak specifically about item eight B, now is the time to approach the podium. Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody with their digital hands raised online?
Mr. Mayor, we have no digital hands raised.
All right, with that, public comment on this item is now closed. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-three on second reading.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Cruz and a second from Vice Mayor Turkin. City clerk?
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passing unanimously.
All right, thank you. This is now item eight C, city attorney.
Proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-four, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, chapter one, article two, definitions, chapter three, article four, section three D, use matrix and notes, and chapter four, article five, minimum off-street parking requirements to modify and add definitions, use regulations, and parking for commercial kitchen uses, food processing, manufacturing, ghost kitchens, and banquet halls, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and ineffective date.
All right, is there anyone from the days that would like to hear the presentation on this again? Oh, one second, Commissioner Kelly, is that a hand up? Yes, go ahead.
I don't, I don't need to see the presentation, but I did have one question. I wanted to make sure. Because I did, I wanted to just double-check Adam with you. Does this affect any of our existing breweries? I know one of our breweries has a kitchen kind of inside of the brewery as opposed to our, you know, some of the other ones that have a food truck. I just wanted to make sure that, does this affect any existing businesses?
Good evening, Commissioner Kelly. My understanding is the answer is no, but I'll ask a representative from our planning staff to come up and just confirm that.
Good evening, Andrew Meyer, Senior Planner, Planning and Zoning. This amendment does not affect any of the breweries. It separates the food manufacturing uses. They were being regulated the same as breweries. So, all we've done is set the, the use regulations for breweries separately and then created new use regulations separate from that for the food manufacturing. But as far as breweries, there's no, there's no changes to that.
Okay, okay, so this doesn't affect the, the one brewery that has a kitchen within it?
It does not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Mayor or Mr. Temple? All right, with that, we'll turn to public comments. Thank you so much. If you'd like to speak specifically on item eight B, excuse me, C, now is the time to approach the podium. All right, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody with their digital, digital hands raised to speak on item eight C?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, public comments on this item is now closed. I'm going to turn now to my colleagues. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-four, second reading.
Two.
Second.
They are eager. So, I heard a motion from Commissioner Cruz. I heard a second from two people simultaneously. Let's go with Commissioner Hay this time. Let's begin now with the roll call vote.
And Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passing unanimously.
Thank you so much. That concludes item eight C. We're now moving on to item eight D, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-five, city attorney.
This is proposed ordinance twenty-three dash zero two-four-five, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, chapter four, article five, section three, special reductions in required off-street parking to add multi-tenant building to warehouse, wholesale, and distribution, providing for conflict severability, codification, and ineffective date.
All right, thank you. Would my colleagues like to hear the presentation on this item? Seeing no one, seeing no requests, we're going to turn now to public comments on this item. If you would like to speak specifically on item eight D, now is the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium for item eight D, we're going to, oh, there's one person. All right. Come on up. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Is it on? Let me reset your time.
There we go. Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. You don't think you're going to get away without me talking about at least one thing tonight, right? So, all I can say is we always need more handicap parking, and we always need more electric car chargers. I will say, I was just out at my niece's birthday in Okeechobee. By the way, it's ninety-seven miles from my house to my brother's house in Okeechobee. And minis are fabulous for electric cars, but their range is not that great. So, I get out there and I come back, or I started coming back, and I knew I wasn't going to have enough juice to get me back. And lo and behold, the city of Okeechobee has four FPNL chargers, and they are super high-speed chargers, unlike ours. I'm so totally jealous. The city of Okeechobee, which has, gosh, only knows how many people, but they are like the perfect spot where all the highways meet, and everyone goes to get between, you know, our area and Orlando and whatever. They have four super high-speed chargers, so I'm totally jealous. I think we need to be getting these. I think wherever this falls into all this stuff you're doing, you need to be putting in more chargers. I mean, I'm sure you see the same news I do, and not just because I'm an electric car owner, but twenty-five percent of all cars will be electric in the next year and a half. And VW is going completely electric. They're getting rid of all their gas cars very soon, like in the next year. How are we preparing? We should always be leaders. We should be on the forefront. FPNL has a great thing with city of Okeechobee, where everything is free, but once your car's done charging, then they charge you forty cents a minute. So, that's another way to get rid of that Tesla that sits out front all the time and that sits in our car charging space for hours and hours and hours every day. And I don't know who owns that, but it's there constantly, and it takes all the space. And we should look into those fabulous chargers, and you should make those mandatory for everything coming forward. I mean, I just don't see why we aren't being more proactive and being the city that is encouraging electric cars. And I don't know, I live over by the hospital. Every morning on the way to work, I drive by like five hundred Teslas driving into the hospital. So, obviously, there's a lot of Tesla workers coming in. Maybe we should be accommodating these upper-income people and their cars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now going to turn to those online. IT, is there anyone with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no digital hands raised.
With that, public comments on this item.
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two-five, second reading.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Let's turn now to the city clerk.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin? Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passing unanimously.
Thank you so much. I believe that concludes all of this section. We're going to move on now to new business, item eleven A. This first item is the executive report for force main break near lift station number three fifty-six at East Boynton Beach Boulevard. The presentation will be given by Dr. Punam Calcutta, our Director of Utilities.
Good evening again, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy City Manager. As you all are aware, we had a source spill and a force main break causing a source spill back in July. And we were very proactive in how we reacted to that, what we responded, how the utility workers came in. Everybody was really, really proactive in what they needed to do. And it took us a couple of days to fix this. I want to thank the mayor for actually being there on site. He was able to come in and see what we were doing. And we were able to talk to a lot of other municipalities, contractors to get this moving. We had Florida Department of Environmental Protection that we talked to, Florida Department of Health, and everybody else, everybody came together to help us out to get this project, and not project, this incident resolved. So, I want to come back and talk through how we went through it, what kind of things we've put in place, what are we doing next, where that project is. So, this is a presentation on that. Please stop me anywhere if you want me to answer any questions, if there's anything else we need to do. Let me see. This map, I know it's a little bit hard to read, but it's a spill incident and location. I want you to focus on that green line going through the center of the slide. That is where the eighty-four inch stormwater pipe that Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, put in place. This pipe came in after the city's force main, which is coming, if you look at that, focus on that yellow box in the middle, that yellow box is our lift station right near the intercoastal. And a dashed black line is the line that was the original force main coming out of that. So, if you see, if you can see, that black dashed line is crossing the green line. So, what, what happened was that our force main was already in place, and then when FDOT came in and put in an eighty-four inch stormwater drain, and that stormwater drain goes out, there's an outfall at that blue box towards the right of the slide where there's an outfall that's bringing water all the way, drainage, stormwater drainage all the way from I ninety-five and coming from the west coming east. So, that's a big pipe, and that pipe is under tidal influence. What that means is because it's so close to the intercoastal, anytime there's high tide, water can come back into that pipe. There's no valve or anything on that pipe, and because it's not a pipe, we can't really put a valve in there. But when FDOT constructed this pipe and installed this pipe, when it, where it was crossing the force main, what they did was they put in a concrete box. It's called a conflict structure. And let me go to the next line, next slide. I'll come back to the slide briefly to show you where the new pipe is. That's a red, a red line there. This rendering, again, done by one of our staff members, Greg Owens, and that is showing a concrete structure, like that box, that rectangular box is the concrete structure. The big pipe going from left to right is the eighty-four inch, showing the eighty-four inch stormwater drain. And as you can see, the conflict box is encompassing where our force main is going from the top of the slide to, towards the bottom of the slide. And so, what, what happens is when you have two pipes that may be in conflict, sometimes this is how it's done. Instead of going above that pipe or below that pipe, they can build a conflict structure that will allow that pipe to pass through. The problem here is that because their tidal influence, these kind of pipes should be in casings so that they contain the whole pipe. Our standards, city standards, require that it should be in a casing. This pipe was not in a casing. I'm not sure. This, this goes back to the seventies and eighties. I think our pipe was installed in the seventies. I believe the FDOT pipe was installed sometime after that. I haven't been able to find enough information to tell us how the construction happened, but this is what, what was in place. So, the city was, the utility was already in the process of replacing this pipe, removing it from this conflict box and getting out of that area. But initially, when that project was bid out, it was bid out as a streetscaping project and the utility project, and the cost of that project, the bids came back, there was only one bid, and the bid was, I think, around five million. So, that was a really, really high cost, in our opinion, for the utility work that needed to be done. So, we decided to separate those two projects and decided to bid the utility pipe replacement project separately because we knew it could be, it would cost much. because we knew it could be, it would cost much, much less to replace the pipe on our own. That's what we were getting ready to do. The bid was ready to go out. And we unfortunately had the pipe break before we could get out to bid. So just think about it, the pipe, the big stormwater drainage pipe is bringing tidal water, brackish water, salt water, into this box, filling that box up every day, twice a day. And then that force main is getting exposed to that brackish water. These pictures show some, and some of these summary items, some of the items are listed out of what kind of actions were taken. As you can see, immediately, as soon as we were informed of a spill in the intercoastal, we were able to get contractors in, put booms to contain the spill, have boats go out and collect whatever debris and material they could, pretty much a couple of times a day. And then we called in divers the same day to try and repair the pipe. And as you can see from that hole, that hole is the manhole on top of the concrete box. And it's, it's a very narrow space. You can barely get a ladder in and a person can go in. Because of the environment, it's a confined space and it also has brackish water, as well as mixed with sewage coming into that hole at this time because there's a break. So these divers are professionals who are certified, who actually have to be suited and have helmets and have oxygen coming, that yellow cord coming in is actually providing them oxygen because you cannot really be in this environment and be exposed. So they tried to fix this for hours. It was over eight to ten hours attempts, one diver, two divers, tried a couple of different ways, tried to get some material from other municipalities to help us out with anything that we didn't have. And they were unsuccessful. On July fourth, which was a holiday, I personally called a number of municipalities in our area and very thankful for all the response we got in the sense that we had a utility community that was eager and willing to help us out with whatever they could, with material, contractors' names, anything, anything that they could provide. And so we had good response in that. By July fifth, we were able to get some more. We were able to get a line stop in, and line stop is a mechanism to stop the flow from the force main. So we, we would try to stop the flow so we could fix and repair. So divers got called back in to try and repair that. They were unable to do that. We could only pull, put the line stop for a certain number of hours because our lift station would start spilling on the ground. So we couldn't have gone longer than that. Our staff, really, I'm so proud of how the staff responded. Our Superintendent of Field Operations, Tremaine Johnson, our super, he's the Division Director, I'm sorry, our Superintendent for Lift Stations, Mark Filseme, and all his mechanical staff, electrical staff, Deputy City Manager, our City Manager, Deputy Director, everybody was on site, really brainstorming. All our engineers were on site. And some of our staff actually didn't go home for two days. They were there constantly, trying to make sure that they were doing everything that was necessary to fix whatever could be done. Our contractors really responded and it was, everybody was trying to do, I just want to convey that. I don't want anybody to think that we were not working or we were trying to figure out a way not to do this as soon as possible. By July fifth, we were able to, we were unsuccessful in doing that. On the right-hand side, you can see that pipe that's laying on the ground. That's a bypass piping that we were able to put in place. And that was by July sixth, we were able to get the spill contained. And we sampled, we sampled for almost a month just to make sure that we were getting down to having, there was no, no bacteriological activity at all that we could see that could be of concern. And all the sampling results were provided to Florida Department of Environmental Health, Department of Health, as well as Florida Department of Environmental Protection on a daily basis or whenever the results were received. And the above-ground pipe was able to bypass that break and we were able to contain the spill. And we continued, continued to collect samples as well as cleaning up the stormwater pipe. We had divers go into that pipe, walk that pipe and check that there was nothing in there. And it took us a couple of weeks to get everything cleaned out completely because you have water coming in and out. So it's not the easiest thing to do. After we were able to do that, we got the commission approved a project to replace the pipe in, on an emergency basis. And we had contractors go in and they were able to replace the pipe. And right now, everything is fact normal. And I, if I go back a couple of slides just to show you the first slide, the red line where you see that's a new pipe, so it is now above the stormwater pipe. So that's how we were able to bypass. So right now, there's no conflict box, no pipe is in that conflict box. Oops. We also went through our system evaluation, looked at any procedures that we needed to review and revise if needed our communications with the wastewater treatment plant to make sure that we were in constant communication if anything like this was to happen. Hopefully not, but if it was to happen in the future, then we would be talking, making sure that we were aware of what they were doing. If they were seeing some anomalies, they were talking to us about that. We looked at all, all of the pipes that could be in conflict boxes. We found only one that, and that one has, is in a casing. So it should be good, but we're going to be keeping a close eye on that. We're going to constantly keep checking if there's anything else that we need to be worried about. The, as I said, as the city's current practice and standard procedures, we need to have, any pipe like this needs to be in a casing. City's also reviewed and updated any kind of overflow, sewer overflow plans, modified any communications that we need to, and so forth. As I said, City Commission approved repair and replacement of the damaged force main on an emergency basis, and that was completed on September sixteen, twenty twenty-three. The utility has started a project to systematically review the existing underground utility infrastructure and develop a risk matrix. And we'll give that presentation of what the scope of that work is going to be and what the timeline for that is in the near future. And we are continuing to perform condition assessment of our wastewater collection system assets and develop a ranking and prioritization for any kind of repairs or any kind of replacements that are needed. So in conclusion, the city ended up spending over one point six million for containment, cleanup, sampling analysis, materials and services for repairs and placement of the damaged pipe. The repairs to the damaged force main was very challenging. But the utility staff responded immediately to mobilize emergency contractors and anybody else that we needed. And at all times, city staff reacted quickly and expeditiously and communicated with city manager's office and regulatory agencies constantly to keep everybody informed. The circumstances were very unique and it was just, sometimes it's like one of those perfect storms that happened to us. Doesn't mean that we are not going to go check, we're going to keep checking and try to preempt anything like this that can happen. The stormwater conflict structure was only accessible in a certain way, so it took us a little bit longer. If it was a pipe just on the, in the ground, we would have been able to get to it and be able to replace it faster and repair it faster. And the pipe could not be exposed in any other way because if we tried, we talked through that, could be removed, that's conflict structure, could we do something else? But that could have caused more damage and caused actually more sewer overflow in that area. And the city's quick response and approach prevented further pipe damage as well as more widespread impacts and resolved the emergency as quickly as possible under very challenging circumstances. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Calcutta, for that presentation and for the report that's been put together. I was the one who made this request and I have asked you some questions, but I do want to follow it up with a couple more today. First, let me say that I'm pleased to hear that you have identified all of other, all of these other conflict boxes that may expose the intercoastal to potential damage. That's really important. Because when this occurred, my first question was, well, how many more are out there, right? That we need to be ahead of it and make sure that if we need to put casings or make replacements, that we do that ASAP and not wait for another accident to occur. I do want to ask you about how the city responded in terms of informing the residents because that was a source of many questions from the neighboring residents. As you know, I was on site and I did make my calls, but what was the city's protocol at that point in notifying the area?
So people in the immediate vicinity, we reached out to them and let them know the buildings, residential buildings in that area. We reached out to them, to the management staff there and let them know. We put signage in that area. We put a board, electronic board. We sent staff out to talk to some of the businesses to make sure that they were aware of it. We also put out, I did a couple of interviews with the media to put that out. It was also put out by our communications department. So there were some of those things done. Could we do better? We can always do better in communications. I believe that very strongly. Sometimes when we are responding to an emergency, our focus gets onto that emergency. And that's why when we looked at our communications plan, we looked at our flow process, process flow for how the communications should work, we have made adjustments in there. We've also talked to our communications department so that we can be more proactive. So everybody is not thinking about resolving the emergency, but somebody is also thinking about how we need to communicate. So that is something that we are more than willing to look at more closely if we, we can share. We've already shared the report. If there are any suggestions on anything that we may have missed, would love to hear. But we really talked to everybody and thought about what else can we do, how else should we do this better? And so we've made those adjustments and we will keep those in mind in any future incidents.
Well, I certainly appreciate those comments. So thank you for that. Again, the communication with the public was something that was brought up to me numerous times. And I know that the city had made some steps, but there is clearly some sort of disconnect or breakdown. So I look forward to having that conversation with you and, and the management team to make sure that we improve that level of communication. So should something happen in the future, we don't have the same level of confusion, misunderstandings, which only breeds mistrust in our local government. I do want to ask you also about the means of detection. Because again, I'm thinking about the future and we will have accidents. Pipes will break. Things do get old. And what is the means by which we detect these, these incidents? I can make some assumptions based on my knowledge of physics, but I, I'll leave that to you. And, and the reason why I'm asking here is what can we do to improve our response time? Because I know that you guys did a lot of work, but you know, truth be told, this probably started a whole lot earlier than it actually did. Perhaps it just wasn't at the level of severity for it to be noticeable. Does that make sense? There's usually some sort of trickling effect until things get worse. It starts off small, then it grows. So how do we detect these things and is there a room for improvement for detection methods so we can respond faster?
You're right. Usually, there are lots of different ways that we would have found out. Most of the times, it's either drop in pressure that you can see in your system, something's going somewhere. And so you see that the flow is getting impacted. In this case, it was again, one of those unique circumstances because it started going into the intercoastal. There were no drops in pressure. There was nothing. The system seemed to be behaving, usually your lift station would come down or your lift station would overflow or your, we have floats that are on our automated alarm systems that would show that the level of a lift station wet well is going up or something's not changing, something's not going as the time-wise, like diurnal patterns and things like that. So our folks are looking at SCADA systems, which are systems that are out in, like all the lift stations have those that communication, communicate with what the pressures are, which pumps are coming on, which pumps are going off. And a lot of those things are how usually we would be able to tell if there was something in, something not right. In this case, it was like, it was like an open system, but the system kept flowing. So the only indication afterwards for us, and we are going to keep that in mind, was that the wastewater plant did have a drop in flow. And initially, the, the thought process was they called us, they said, do you have any breaks anywhere? And we didn't see any breaks anywhere. We, whatever we checked, we didn't find anything. We looked at all the lift stations, everything seemed to be flowing, all our pumps seemed to be working. There were no pressure drops anywhere. So we told them, no, there was no breaks as far as we could tell. So they started to, looking into whether their meters could be, flow meters could be incorrect. So that was the first thing they started checking into. So now we, even, even if I had known everything that we know, it would be impossible for us to go check every place. What we could possibly do is see, do a smell test. Go around in some of the areas and say, are you smelling something? And that could be an indication that something else might be going on. But other than that, when you have a break somewhere, unless you get some pressure drops, unless you see some SCADA instruments telling you that the flow is not working out or something's wrong with some pumps or some of your wet well, levels are high or low. Those are some of the indicators for some of these things. Otherwise, it becomes really hard to tell in a big system. You can't, can't see every place because a lot of stuff is underground. That's a problem. So sometimes you'll have things bubbling up and that'll tell you. Sometimes there'll be a sinkhole that'll be telling you. Sometimes there will be pressure losses throughout the system. So all of those, those indicators are ways to do something about it. We, we really, really scratched our heads and tried to think of what else could we have done to find out earlier. And like I said, there would be very few things we could have done differently to find out earlier except for, yes, the wastewater plant did see a pressure drop, sorry, a flow drop, and that could be an indicator for something. So we would, next time anything like that happens, we're going, we're sending everybody out throughout the system trying to see whether there's anything else that we're seeing, there's any other anomaly that could be happening because it's not visible because it was going into the intercoastal. So that's, that's the bad part of where it happened and how it happened. The good side of that is that it didn't expose people as much. And we were able to contain it in that area and we were able to clean up that area faster. If it's on land, many more people get exposed much more quickly. So that's, those are some of the advantages and disadvantages of where it might have happened. But to answer your question, we continue to do that. We'll, when we do our risk analysis, we will ask that question again. Are there any other, any other things that we can do? There were not too many things we could have done in this case.
Well, I, I appreciate your candor. And while I don't expect perfection, what I, what I've heard from you, part of what you've said is that, listen, the wastewater treatment plant, which is in the border of Boynton and Delray, was able to pick up on these pressure drops, the flow drops in advance. And because this was leaking into the intercoastal, we could not notice or identify the location of where this was occurring. It was an open system, I believe that was the phrase that you used. So while I understand that, it is concerning because we are a coastal city and I would assume that that would not be the reason for why we wouldn't be able to detect these changes, right? And so in other words, because we're a coastal city, my assumption here is that we have already preempted those types of challenges and we would already have sensors. But again, I don't expect perfection, but I do hope that you continue to work with your team to, if we need to identify new detection methods, so that doesn't become a reason down in the future. Does that make sense?
We'll, we'll continue to look for any other way, but I don't want anybody to think that with the flow, what was happening was, it was like for our system, it seemed like the system was continuing to work. It didn't seem like anything in the system wasn't working. And when you have a break, the system stops working.
Because we could not identify where, if anywhere, there was an issue.
There was no indication there could be an issue except for a flow drop. And that flow drop, the first thing they wanted to check was whether there could be a flow meter issue. And if there wasn't a flow meter issue, then, and I, I understand what you're saying. I'm not trying to argue the point. I'm just trying, I don't know if everybody understands when you don't have anything stopping that pressure or somewhere the wa, the pumps are continuing to work as hard as, because they're continuing, they think the system's working. So we are looking at if there's any other ways. So we are looking at if there's any other ways. We have sensors in place already. This was a very unique area and a very, very unique situation. But I hear you. We still don't want anything like that to ever happen. We don't want ever to have any sewer going into any water body and not the intercoastal at all. I agree with whatever we can do, we will. But I will go back and see if there's anything else that we may not have thought about.
With that, say, I want to say thank you and I appreciate the work that you're doing. All right, and I look forward to these improvements. Let me turn now to my colleagues on the days, if they have any additional questions or comments for Dr. Calcott. I'm seeing none on my right, anybody on my left? Commissioner Kelly, did you have any questions?
I just had one question, thank you for the presentation. I'm curious, when we're talking about detection and us not recognizing that there was an issue. And I know you said it's a unique situation and during agenda review, we were talking about this. You know, when FDOT put in that conflict box, did that contribute to the inability for detection? Meaning there's water flowing, our line breaks, but there's still the same amount or right around an X, an expected amount of flow? Is that what could have contributed to the lack of, or the not being able to see a detection in, you know, an immediate detection in flow?
The area that, that this was in, where the conflict box was, because of the tidal influences, yes, that contributed to, for us not being able to see something and be able to get a faster response because of that. Also not having a pipe in a casing when this is this close to the intercoastal. That's another thing that is a big contributor for what, what might have happened. As I've mentioned to some of you, we sample, we put what are called coupons in these pipes to check them, how the pipe is doing over years. So just past the break, we had a coupon and the pipe looks fine. So really, it wasn't the age of the pipe per se that was causing this problem. It was the location and what this was exposed to. So yes, that contributed to not being able to find out and also contributed to the break actually happening where it happened.
Right, because the whole rest of the pipe on either side of this conflict box was intact and would have been fine. Except, and where it broke was in the conflict box.
Correct.
Right, so, so thank you. So I just, I know that you are always looking at different ways of detection. Are there other pipes that don't have casings in the area that is on your agenda to address sooner rather than later?
We, we look, yeah, all the pipes on the eastern seaboard, we're always looking at more carefully because they're exposed a little bit more. But this pipe, because of the tidal influence, it's getting this saltwater. A pipe in the ground is not getting exposed in the same way. Even if groundwater comes up or whatever, it's still, it's not exposed in that way. But we definitely look at those and when we do the risk matrix and when I come back, talk to you about it, we look at that, where's the location, what kind of soil conditions, how deep is the pipe? All of those things, age of the pipe, material of the pipe. We look at all of those things to try and address whether there are other areas that we should be paying more attention to. So we are constantly doing that. It's, it's always with this infrastructure that starts getting old. It's always something that you are worried about and challenged about. But we have a lot of people who are very knowledgeable in the utilities, who've been with the utilities for a long time and know which areas may be more prone to certain things. So we pay more attention, we are doing more maintenance activities there as needed. Like I said, we put these coupon in water mains as well as wastewater mains. So we can pull those out and see how they're doing. So there are all of those kinds of things we are doing. Yes, there are always areas that are going to be more prone. On the western side of the city, we feel a lot of pipes were put in really, really deep. So sometimes there's only a small break, but we have to, it becomes a costly emergency expense for us when we have to fix those. On the eastern side, they may be more shallow, so you can get to them more easily and repair them. But they may be exposed more because of the groundwater. So there, there are challenges with all of that, but we continue to look at how we should be prioritizing based on those challenges.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all I have there.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Anything else from my colleagues, last call? All right, with that, oh, all right, Commissioner, hey, go ahead.
I really appreciate the, the way you guys handled this as best you could. And you took, took action immediately. I was thinking, you know, there's all that phrase of boots on the ground. I heard you mention something about the community. Maybe we could have eyes on the ground. But if we could educate the community on what to look for and, and make that a list that we could educate them. If you see this, that, I don't know what that would be, you know, smell or water settling on the, on the ground or whatever. If we could make that available to them, I, I'm sure they could be of some help. The community could help us and because naturally the more eyes you have, watch, looking for these things, the better chance we have of catching them before it becomes a real problem. So what I was thinking, if we could get something that we could educate, a list of what to look for. I don't know, put in the water bill or whatever and say, hey, we need your help. And making sure we don't ever have this problem begin in the future. Here's what you look for, notify, you know, this phone number, whatever, something of that nature that we could get the community involved. What do you think?
That's an excellent idea. We actually, anytime anybody calls us, that's what we tell them. You are sometimes our first eyes on the ground and first ears. If you've seen something that doesn't smell right, doesn't look right, please let us know. Because sometimes we don't have that many people that I can send out to throughout the city and look at every single thing, every single day. I wish, I want to, I would love to, but that's not always possible. And not just our community, we actually ask even city employees that are out and about if they see something. Utility staff, maybe meter readers who might be going in and doing something else, if they see something. So you're absolutely right, that's an excellent idea. That we can come up with, hey, these are some of the things for water breaks. This is what you might see for a sewer break, a lift station not working, this is what you might see. And even if it means that some people might call us with something that may not be an issue, we would rather know that and we would rather have, have somebody check that out and not find out. So I, I think that's a great idea that we can implement pretty much right away.
Especially based on what we have experienced, you know, let's, let's use that as a springboard into the reason we are trying to educate. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I'm tempted to respond or not respond, or I don't want to belabor the point. I, I do think it's a good idea to educate the public, but I'll just say the following. At the same time, right, I just don't want to cause a sense of panic. That, that is, that's, you know, that's the perspective I'm coming from. I don't want them to think the city can't get itself together. So now we're asking people to go run around and start sniffing, right? This is, it sounds.
Your point is well taken. I think everybody heard, heard this and read about it in the paper. So it's not something that's a surprise to anybody, but your point is well taken.
Thank you. And I understood your point as well. I think we should inform, but I don't want to cause a sense that we're not able to do something that we really should be able to do.
We can say, if you see something, say something.
Yeah.
Or smell something. All right. All right, let's move on. Anybody here on my, all right. With that, we thank you for your time, your hard work and your presentation and to your entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11B, this is a presentation regarding fleet management due to the concerns with the auto strike and the possible reduction in products. This item was requested by Commissioner Kelly. Mario, please introduce yourself and begin the presentation.
First and foremost, happy holidays, everyone. Happy New Year as we get to closing 2023. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my esteemed colleagues and members of the public. My name is Mario Guzman, I'm the Director of Public Works. And going to give a real quick overview of where just the automotive industry is standing. This thing on, there you go. All right, real quick, we're going to talk about the current UAW, which is the United Automotive Workers Union status. Some of the initiatives we're doing as regards to acquisition of parts and a quick, just a summary of our replacements. This strike has really just exasperated our current situation with COVID. COVID really affected a lot of supply chain issues. So compounding on top, compounding on top of that, now you have this strike going on that just really exasperated the issue. So the good thing about that, COVID did train us on how to acquire vehicles quickly. So when this came around, we just had to, it wasn't that big of a pivot as it relates to vehicles. September 13th is when, September 15th is when it started, UAW strike. It affected 7,000 Ford workers, affected workers of General Motors with Dodge, Ram. Total about 10,000 employees it affected. As of the 20th of October, there was no negotiations. Negotiations were ongoing and there was no agreements. The good thing is the agreement has been made, so they're getting to work. Nevertheless, I wanted to point out the date of October 20th, which is almost two months to the date. So that does affect the supply chain issues regarding availability of vehicles and parts for the vehicles. Some of the impacts, reduced availability of vehicles as I stated earlier. Replacement time increases, we put an order in for a vehicle. Sometimes your order is in and they don't give you a build date. We've come to commission numerous times to increase the purchase orders because we put orders in in '21 and '22. They couldn't meet that order and they came back and told us, now it's going to cost you $5,000 more. At that point, we have no option. It's like, hey, let's just go ahead, we still have an order placement. And also increase our maintenance costs because we're keeping vehicles longer and the replacements aren't coming. So that's just kind of an overview of how that affects fleet availability. Some of the initiatives we've done, we have in-stock acquisitions. So basically what we do is we look at the sheriff's contract, the state contract, and we start calling these dealers, say, hey, what do you have on the floor? What do you have in stock? We've come to commission before on a couple of acquisitions and thank you guys for being part of the process, allowing us to purchase vehicles that are on the ground. So significantly increases our productivity. We've had garbage trucks that municipalities have canceled, they're on the ground. We buy and we pick them up and they're, they're ready to go two weeks, which saves us about a year and a half. Another thing we do is stock order acquisitions. Many times these, you have an allocation as a dealer. Some of these are awarded, some of them are purchased through other cities. For whatever reason, cities cancel those orders and we are able to pick up those orders. We've done that this year where a municipality canceled three garbage trucks. The order was still in place, we went ahead and scooped it up. So that actually saved us about probably close to a year in waiting for a garbage truck. And then also came to commission some months back for NAPA implementation. And that is just to address our warehouse and stock. Our warehouse team was taxed with going out to bids and contracts for parts and services of vehicle. By tapping into NAPA, we tap into their whole network. Quick overview, this year alone, we've done over 36 inventory acquisitions, 23 for police. I'd like to say that all the marked units for the police department have been addressed and sourced. And they are on the ground as we speak. Nothing is on order or, or waiting. We have received units from 22 and 23. 23 police units, five solid waste, seven even sourced, someone canceled a fire chassis. We were able to pick that up. Stock order acquisitions, we have about 13 that other municipalities have canceled and we, we picked those up as well. NAPA implementation, that was approved by the selected body, May 16th. P O was issued June 14th. We had training with the team members and as of October 30th, that store is, that NAPA store is open for us. And we will be having kind of a grand opening, which is a public-private partnership as we work together to get parts for our vehicles. It just gives us robust manpower, access to 57 distribution centers throughout the state of Florida, 6,000 auto stores nationwide. And before they came onboard, we actually gave them a list of all of our fleet vehicles, what are the common items that we need, so then keep those in stock. Replacement overview, we replaced, 75 units were replaced, 32 ordered, 14 sourced, 18 received, four in progress, 39 pending. As of the last two commission meetings, that number is actually lower. I think we're about 10 units left to purchase. Keep in mind, the fiscal year started October 1st, we're in December. We got about 10 units left to purchase and there are pumps and a couple of vans for utilities. And that's all I have, any questions?
All right, thank you, Mario. Let me turn this now to Commissioner Kelly, since she requested this item, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mario. My only question, thank you for doing this. I know it now, it's kind of the, hopefully the, you know, the strike is behind us and everyone, everything will start to kind of resolve. But I know we're going to probably see some hiccups for a while. Are we noticing as far as parts? I know we, we instituted the, the in-stock, you know, the in-house NAPA. But how is that affecting cost of parts? Are we noticing any, are we noticing a benefit by having that? Or we know, is, or is the benefit just that we can easily get the parts as opposed to waiting longer and?
The cost of the parts in some instances are cheaper. We're able to source them faster. So a lot of times if I'm given a part, hey, we can replace that alternator for $20 cheaper. You'll have it next week. Or we can spend 30 bucks and have it today and have that vehicle on the ground. We have to factor that into the equation. The parts cost is cheaper. Where we are really maximizing as a city is opportunity cost. Less contracts, less invoices to process, less staff, staff power to, to process all those invoices, contracts. That's where we're really maximizing our opportunity cost.
Great, thank you. No, thank you for the presentation. That was, I think it was important, it was important at the time to make sure we were on top of it and staying ahead so that we didn't run into a situation where we had employees with no vehicles. So thank you for this presentation. I'm, I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hay, did you have any questions or comments?
Oh, just thanks for keeping us informed, Mario.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, anything? Commissioner Cruz.
All right.
All right, with that, with, thank you, Mario. All right, so we have concluded item 11B. And this brings me to the newly added item to our agenda, item 11C, which is for us to have a discussion of a complaint that I received. Let me preface this by saying that this is a difficult conversation for us to have. And as facts become evident and shared with all of you, I can imagine the angst and the difficulty it is for us to hear some of the complaints we've received. I'm going to summarize it, but I want to inform you that although I can summarize it, I have received a formal written complaint. And so if it is the pleasure of this board to hear the letter, I can certainly read it. I can also certainly forward it to all of you. But first I want to address and make it known to all of you. And the backstory or the preface to all of this is first for me to say that when an employee makes a complaint, whether it be about discrimination, retaliation, whatever that case may be, normally this employee would go to the HR manager. They would bring it up to the city manager. And unfortunately, in this particular instance, the individuals involved are the individuals I've mentioned. The HR director, the city manager, the deputy city manager, the city attorney. And so when that happens, we can't go to them as we would normally do. And with that, it has been elevated to the level of the commission. Now, I have spoken to multiple attorneys. And when this is brought before us, claims of retaliation, discrimination, disparaging treatment, we have a legal responsibility to address it. You know, I struggle to discuss this because the claims are difficult to hear. They're difficult to read, but it is not something we can ignore. We have a legal responsibility to address it. And so let me turn now to my colleagues and say, you know, would you prefer that I summarize the situation? Would you prefer that I just share with you the formal complaint? What would be the preferred mechanism to discuss this? And so I, I see that Vice Mayor, your hand is already up. Let's turn to you first and then we'll go back and forth.
I would like to see this complaint before opening up dialogue, especially if it's with executive level management. And if these are, you're saying these are complaints, correct?
Yes, these are complaints and they are extremely.
Right, and I don't think it's appropriate because we don't. Right, and I don't think it's appropriate because we don't, I need to look at the facts, I need to look at this before, because I feel that we could then open up the city to a lawsuit with individuals that may be in this complaint if we discuss this on the dais.
Well, this is why I'm presenting options.
Yeah.
Right? And so your concern about opening us up to a lawsuit is precisely the same concern I have, which is why I do need to share this information with you. And I should inform you that this complaint letter, I did receive it earlier this afternoon. And so, and let me, let me also share with all of you. I did receive an initial email prior to our HR director being placed on administrative leave, which was then followed up with a more detailed scathing accounting of various incidents. Now, I, you know, Vice Mayor, the goal here is to act responsibly. And so this is why I have to bring it up to all of you. And whatever it is that, it is the wish or the direction of the board, we will follow, right? And so, you know, if there's anybody else that would like to speak on this item, Commissioner Kelly, then Commissioner Hay.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, my position, I haven't seen it. So my position is that I would like to see it and have my own conversation with city attorney before having a discussion openly during a commission meeting and be able to. I mean, I know you had to bring up this initial at a commission meeting, but I would like to have some, some of my own, you know, discussion with city attorney before we talk about it in an open forum.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Hay, you were next.
Yes, we've, we've had similar situation like this, even when we are behind closed doors. We have allowed the mayor to do an internal investigation and bring back the information at which time we acted on. This has gone above. I do want to know more about it, but this is according to what the mayor is saying. It's above and it includes certain key people. So my position at this point would be to utilize what we've done in the past so many times is to give the mayor the authorization to look into this and bring this information back to us. Because this could really get out of hand very quickly. And since it was directed to him, he has it, I would like to see it. But I, I think he should be the one to do this internal investigation and give us the information.
And, you know, we are not here to form any conclusions.
No, we're not, we're not making any conclusions.
Precisely, but that is.
We're just trying to make some procedure direction as to how we want to approach this, as I see it. If there's another objective here, I, I, I would like to hear.
So, you know, listen, my only objective is to share this with all of you as I feel and as I have been advised that I have a legal responsibility to do so and to address these concerns. I think the appropriate way to address complaints of, of this gravity is to do what HR would normally do, what management would normally do, which is they hire a third-party investigator to investigate these claims. That is standard procedure. Now, again, normally we would rely on our own HR director, we would rely on our own managers and city attorney. But if they are named in these complaints, then my common sense tells me that we should look for a third-party investigator to investigate these claims and, and, and let them bring to us the facts. And then from there, we'll make a decision.
Yeah.
How was that?
What's concerning is, what's concerning right now is there's being direction proposed when no one else has seen these complaints besides the mayor. So I think what we need to do is, all of us need to look at this. I agree with Commissioner Kelly. I need to look and see what this is about before I can make an educated, good governance decision on how to move forward. And I need to have those conversations. And I just, I, I think taking action immediately is extremely suspicious and I'm, I'm disgusted to hear that without knowing what's in front of us. And so for me, I need to look at this first. I'm more than happy to take a look and then come back for a special commission meeting, shade meeting, whatever. You know, I guess we can't trust that this, whatever outside counsel we look at and move forward. But to identify and take action before something's even assessed is just very suspicious to me.
Well, Vice Mayor, again.
And, and you've already looked at this, so you know, I.
Yes, I was the recipient of these complaints.
I can take your judgment, correct? I can take your judgment, but I need to see it for myself before we make.
Understood, understood. I'm, I'm not the sender of these complaints, so I don't control who gets it and who doesn't. I'm just the recipient. I can certainly forward them to you and have all of you, of course, examine it. My intention here was to give you the options, all of you, by which you want to proceed through this process. I could summarize, I could read the letter, or if you just want me to forward and you can read it, we can come back, as you mentioned, a special session. I'm not opposed to anything, but you, I am here to inform.
I think it's appropriate because it involves executive level management for us to look at this individually, privately, not in this capacity. Because again, that could, depending on what's being said or what's not being said, you know, in this complaint, you know, that could open us up. And I'm not going to put the taxpayers at risk for a decision that we can be slow on and be mindful of in the right way to do it, which would be, and again, I mean, if we're talking, you said the city manager, deputy city manager, HR, city attorney. So I think it's crucial that we look at this individually and, and come back. Because the last thing I want to do is, you know, have this conversation and some, you know, and then it's just, you know, this, this opens up even worse by having this conversation on the dais.
Well, we can only have it on the dais, right? This is the only way.
But we don't know what we're, we haven't looked at this, right? You're the only person that's looked at this. And so I think we all need a chance to look at this before we even make a decision, you know?
Your, your point is taken, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
I understand. Commissioner Cruz, your thoughts?
All right. First of all, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I would like to also see the complaint to understand it further. It was good that you mentioned that we have a legal duty to address this because this would be my first time hearing something like this or even encountering something like this in this current position. At the same time, it's important to note that when investigations happen, if you mention that the people that are in the investigation would be management. And it is the.
Yes.
City manager?
Yes, yes, the individuals that have already been named.
So because of that, we might have to have a further discussion about what needs to be done because if there's a question of situations that may or may not have happened, you know, with management and management is overseeing that, then, you know, how do we, how do we handle that? And it was mentioned earlier, maybe like having a shade session or something like that. But the question is if, for example, and I'm so sorry that this is happening, but if it appears that our, our city attorney is also involved in it, how do we have a closed-door session if the individual named potentially would be part of that? Would that not be a conflict in that case?
I see a head nod from our city attorney.
So can we get some advice?
Before you chime in, city attorney, can I just jump in very quickly, Commissioner Cruz? And the city attorney can make, correct me if necessary. My understanding about sage, sage, excuse me, shade session is that they occur under very limited circumstances. In my history in the city, shade sessions occur if there is matter pertaining to CBAs, negotiations with unions. The other matter is for actual ongoing litigation. And you've experienced some of that, this particular commission has experienced some of that where the, the case number is announced and, and the title, and then we meet in closed-door sessions to address the litigation matter. To my knowledge, I mean, this is where I'll defer to the city attorney. To my knowledge, those are the only instances where we can have a shade session. Perhaps there's more exceptions, but my understanding is we have to address this in the public and this is what I'm doing now. All right, so city attorney, you were about to chime in, so.
I would just say, without knowing who exactly, I don't know who it's from and those sorts of things. And to the extent that it might involve me, there's really two separate things going on, right? Can I advise you about a shade session one way or the other? I can't because I don't know who the complainant is. And two, if it involves me ethically, I can't advise you on that either.
So then with, with that being said, would, from a legal perspective, would we then need to hire outside counsel to handle that portion?
Well, typically when there is a complaint, and I'm just speaking generally relating to retaliation and those sorts of things, you have to look at whether, what is the protected activity that was retaliated against and those sorts of things. There is a deputy city attorney who can provide advice relating to those things. However, the commission does have the authority to appoint special counsel. Generally speaking, and again, I'm speaking generally, that you would really do two things. You're not just hiring an investigator, you're hiring an attorney to represent the board. And you're also, then that attorney is hiring an investigator to do an investigation. That is what my recommended course of action would be, even if it were not me that was being accused of some sort of impropriety.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so does that mean then that we would need to get an attorney? And is that what?
The deputy city attorney.
I, I think you have to look at the allegations first and then make that decision. I, I, I can't, without knowing, I, I can't tell you whether it's appropriate for the deputy city attorney to give advice.
Does the deputy city attorney report to you?
Yes, correct. However, you know, deputies can step into the shoes, that's kind of the point of having a, a deputy. But I, I think she could give advice about shade sessions and she could give advice generally about appointing outside counsel. But maybe not specific advice as to the actual complaint.
So Vice Mayor, I see that you'd like to speak, but first let me check. Commissioner Cruz, were you, were you finished for now? I just want to make sure you had your opportunity.
Yeah, I'm just trying to process.
Yes, this is a difficult conversation. We'll go back and forth until we get some clarity. Let's go back to the other side. Commissioner Kelly, do you have anything to add at this point? Or should we move to Commissioner Hay?
I got one more thing.
I, I think I made my, I mean, I would, I would like to, to see it, but you know, I, I, and, and, and learn what our options are before we make a decision on what our options are. I don't even know what our options would be. And I, and Commissioner Hay, thank you for, for informing us that this has kind of happened in the past and what they've done in the past. But would like to know what our options are. And if that's our option, that the mayor investigates it and the mayor, you know, does due process and, and that happens correctly and legally, then, then that's, you know, what would happen or that's what we would all decide at a, at a later meeting. But I, without knowing what the options are and without being able to speak to our city attorney and get input tonight, I'm not comfortable making any sort of decision other than I would like to see what we're talking about.
Commissioner Hay?
My only reason for bringing up what we've done in the past, just to let us know that we're not locked in any particular direction. We have, we do have the authority to go left, right, in the middle. Having said that, I, I would agree with what's been said. I don't know exactly what, what is stated here. I would like to know what it is before I make any decision, which is just, to me is, is, is common sense. You don't vote on something when you don't know enough about what is, what is being said. So I would like to, to have it in my hand and read it for myself. And then we explore the options from that point.
All right.
That, that's my position now.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. So again, I do feel compelled that it is my legal responsibility to bring this to all of you. I was prepared to share this information with all of you, either via summary or by reading the text exactly. But I see that the direction that you are indicating, which is you'd like to address this privately, understand, ask your questions privately, then we'll come back. And by then, hopefully, we will have some options. Now, as it pertains to the options, I'm not exactly sure who would present us those options. My understanding, even from a conversation with the city attorneys, it is the standard procedure to hire a third-party investigator, which is what the city does, if I misstated. But I believe this, that's what the city does when it comes to employees. And so I don't see why we would do anything differently. And this third-party investigator would just assess whether or not there's, you know, credibility in these claims. And if there are, how we can proceed forward.
My recommendation is that you hire outside counsel.
Yes.
First, which is separate than an investigator.
Separate from investigator, okay.
And then that outside counsel can advise you as to whether or not the complaints raised to a level that warrants an investigation.
I see, okay, all right, understood.
It's separate.
Understood.
Because it has to be a valid legal complaint on its face, correct?
Of course, all right. So thank you for that clarification.
Just for clarity.
Go ahead. I can't with the sunglasses. They look good. I mean, an 80s movie.
I assume it's from.
When you have ice surgery and you reach my age, you understand. What I was going to say, as far as the outside counsel, should we individually be talking with that person? Is that what you, is that what you're saying? That, or, or the, the person that received the information, the, the mayor in this case?
So you guys are the board and the board is what is represented by counsel. And there is, unless you guys direct all of counsel to go through the mayor, each individual board member has the right to speak to the counsel.
My recommendation that we each individually talk with this outside counsel.
Of course.
Okay, so.
Of course.
I just want to clarify that and get that on the table. Okay.
All right, Vice Mayor, you had your hand up.
Yep, no, I, okay, so understood about the outside counsel. You know, depending on the material here, I think, again, first thing is we need to know what we're looking at. We need to know who's involved, see what the conflicts of interest are, you know, with management and on the dais. Make sure, and legal counsel. So we need to understand what we're working with here before we make a, a decision. That's, that's where I'm at. I need to look at this first and before I do anything else.
All right. Commissioner Cruz, was there anything else, any follow-up from you?
I guess I want to, I mean, I, I kind of have to feel like I have to ask you, but what would be the process then? If, you know, when, what are we going to do? Like send an email forward, print out whatever the remarks or, or, you know, questions are? What do we do from this point forward?
My recommendation is that you get a copy of the.
Complaint.
Complaint. You, then there's one of two ways. Stacy can propose several outside councils, she, she can engage them. Or we can bring a resolution to appoint a special counsel, much like we have on item number 12 today. So you have to do that and then from there you can speak to counsel.
Okay, how would we select? Because, again, I will have to read it, but if it appears that there might be upper management included somehow in the complaint, would then that create a conflict for any deputies per se that report to? So should we, like, how would?
I will tell you, you do have outside counsel currently engaged on behalf of the city of Boynton Beach, who could be an available source to speak with regard, with regard to that. And then he could actually, if you're not comfortable with Stacy, he's already been retained, he's already on retainer. And then he could advise whether or not there is a conflict or whether he could advise the commission and recommend an investigator.
So it would automatically be decided that it's the current attorney? It wouldn't be like the commission decides on a, on an outside attorney that's not involved in any way.
It could be either way. You got, you got, you know? I, I, my recommendation is look at the complaints and then we can, yeah. Then I guess.
Well, these are just questions and people want to know what the process is.
Collectively decide how to proceed from there.
So how about this? I'll make sure to distribute these complaints and you all can take the time to review them. And I want, before we leave today, I'd like to, you know, figure out from all of you how much time you need because I'd like to have a meeting on this so we can move forward. You know, Vice Mayor, I heard you say a special meeting. I mean, that's something I can certainly call. This would be a very short special meeting specifically just to discuss the complaint and what next steps you'd like all to take. Is that something that all of you are open to? I'll distribute the information so privately, you'll read it privately, and then we'll come back for a special meeting.
Remember, you said short.
Short, I, yeah, so you can hold me to it, right? But ultimately, Commissioner, you know how it goes. It all depends on the body.
I have no problem with that. It is the thing that's sticking out of my head is the selection of that outside counsel. How we're going to, but we'll we'll get there when we
Right, right, right.
Have this short meeting.
Okay. You know, for now, I'll just say obviously it had, it would need to be impartial, right? Obviously.
Yes. Now, as far as getting that information out to us, who's going to be doing that?
I can very easily forward you the email.
That you're violation?
No, as long as you do not.
I don't believe you can do that. I would send it to Adam. Or the clerk who could then distribute it to.
Okay, we can do that. My understanding is when it comes to emails, as long as there's no back and forth discussion, if you send it out for informational purposes only, then it'd be okay. But I'll send it to the city clerk just to be safe.
An abundance of caution.
Absolutely, I.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else from my colleagues? All right, thank you so much, everybody. We're going to move on to the next item, which was, this is going to be item 11D. This is a discussion about the mangroves. And so just to orient ourselves, these are the mangroves just south of the Riverwalk property. These mangroves are currently under, if I'm not mistaken, it is currently under the ownership of Israim Realty. And my understanding of the situation and all of you, I'd like to hear from all of you. My understanding is that, I forget which year, was it 2017 or 2018? It did speak at a city commission meeting. And I remember apparently there was conversations with then former Commissioner Justin Katz about as part of the deal, and I'll have staff correct me, perhaps your memory is stronger with this, as part of the development deal that they would transfer ownership of the mangroves to the city so the city can preserve it. So that is my understanding of the situation. Deputy City Manager, I'll let you chime in if you remember similarly or differently.
Thank you, Mayor. So my recollection is when we were going through the approvals, there was no documentation or any conditions of approvals that were requiring that. I think there was some discussions either privately with Mr. Katz or individually with the board with the interest of doing that. But there was no formal agreement or written agreement to do that. I think there was, like I said, a verbal commitment or a promise to do so.
There was no follow through, basically.
Well, there the the, there was no action to do that. There was a, there was a promise to do at a future date. And actually, I think I was one of the persons that would routinely get updates from Israim and pass that along to the commission or bring in, you know, it's asked at this dais to provide an update. Again, I think in the review of that, there there were waiting because they couldn't identify exactly how much of the mangroves was there. So they wanted to go through their environmental permitting first. That was my recollection of it. And then once that happened, then they were going to look to actually dealing or providing some easement to the city so that they could fulfill the vision of that boardwalk along the intercoastal there. So I did reach out to Israim this week based on some of the emails I saw going around. And I did hear back from them that they they do still feel that's a commitment. There that when they go through the process of bringing a project back through and or if there's a some additional follow up, that maybe it happens sooner. But they did say that that is still something they're considering.
All right, sounds good. So listen, my concern here is, you know, depending on how we word this, there was no follow up, there was no commitment. But I'm I'm glad to hear that there's still openness for this. So let me turn now to my colleagues. Those were just my initial thoughts. Let's go around the dais. I don't know who was last, but maybe Commissioner Kelly, then we'll go left or right.
Yeah, I mean, I I mean, I talked to Andrew in my agenda review and I think that we, I know I've seen the emails. And I I need some clarity on, you know, even what, you know, I'm glad to hear that they're still willing to do that. You know, and and I, moving forward, it's my understanding that once they have to go come before us, that that's something that we could solidify at the time. But and that is, that's my understanding is that there's nothing that they are willing necessarily to solidify now in writing without moving with their project to the next step, correct?
I did not ask that to them. That is something that we could reach out to them and see if it's something they're willing to entertain prior to submitting. We can do that. I'm not sure if they will, but we can ask. Again, like I mentioned, that you may have an opportunity when they do, if if they do submit for a project, we we don't know when or if they will at this point. So that's something, that's another opportunity as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay?
Is the city, who's maintaining them now?
They're they're under private ownership. So the the developer or the property owner is the one that's responsible for any maintenance that would be required at this time.
Your recommendation is really for come up with a, an agreement between the two to turn it over to the the city?
I think that's something that we need to look a little further in. You know, if there's other means to accomplish what the city would like to see done, which I think the vision was this boardwalk that had allowed public access to the waterway. If we can obtain that without having to own the mangroves and that them in perpetuity to the maintenance, that might be a better option. But again, these are all things that we would have to sit down at the table to negotiate or discuss with them. If you guys decide today that that's the direction you would like to do, we can initiate those conversations and bring back a report.
That's the direction I, that's where I am. Proceed to talk at the table with them, come up with that agreement, hopefully, and we move forward.
I concur. Anything else from my colleagues?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you you said, you hit it on the head, right? I was going to bring up who who had this verbal agreement. It was on the dais, it's on YouTube, it's posted. You know, I think the most important thing is to come back to the table and get this in writing. I know I talked to the DCM about this. You know, a verbal agreement is great, but it's not going to stand in court. And so what, and I know that we don't have, you know, really leverage or any negotiating power in this, except for a good faith and a handshake. And so at this point in time, you know, a as far as next steps, I think we just need to see if they can come to the table and are willing to get this in writing. You know, this is a, you know, we're we're holding our end of the agreement. And I think, you know, they should do the same, you know, and as mangroves are important, you know, there's a lot of preserved mangroves throughout the city. You know, the border, you know, both Ocean Ridge and Boynton Beach off the intercoastal. And so for me, whatever I can do to help preserve them and, you know, what we can do as a as a body in the city, I think it matters on what we can get in writing, what we can get as an agreement. So I just, you know, there's consensus, I would just ask staff to come come with the applicant and try to get, you know, something in writing.
All right, Commissioner Cruz, any thoughts on your end?
Same thing, I I agree with what was said earlier and to have staff communicate and bring something back to us.
All right, thank you. Deputy City Manager, was there sufficient clarity? I make sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. No, this is a internal discussion item of the city commission. No action is being taken today. However, I do see one person has approached the podium. Let me ask for the consent of my colleagues. Are you comfortable with public comment on this item, even though there is no item? All right, with that, let me switch to the timer. You know the drill, state your name for the record.
Yep, Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. As one of, I think, if I'm looking around correctly, one of only three people in the room right now that was here when all this happened. I would think you'd be reaching out to the small handful of us that actually remember this, that were there on March 21st, 2017, when he verbally said he was doing this. And I'm sorry, that should hold up in court because he said it during a commission meeting and it's on videotape and we all heard it. And I'm one of the witnesses, feel free to swear me in. And so we do have proof and this should be ours. Approximately a year ago, someone from Florida Wildlife went out there. That place is chock full of orchids. I'm not sure if you're aware that that is, those of you who are new to the area, that's where Merkel Orchids used to be located. And they were one of the largest orchid distributors in the United States back in the day. I mean, the last time I remember them being there was, I think they closed down like the late 80s, early 90s. And apparently every time they thought something was dying, they tossed it out back. Bear in mind that they were there long before the ghost orchid laws went into effect. There is potentially ghost orchids back there. We need to be having an examination by a governing body from the state of Florida or the federal government to go in and actually examine and see what is there. The ghost orchids are federally protected plants. If you go to the Florida Wildlife Commission website, which was on the letter I sent out to all of you that, thank you, I'm glad all of you saw it, you will note that one of the things that says on the Florida Wildlife Commission website is that these trees are protected by law. It is against the law to cut these down. This guy is cutting them down. And I know that because one of the managers at Joanne's Fabrics lives over there and sits on her balcony and watches him cut them down. And and I don't care about the medication nonsense and who swapped what. I don't even know how that's legally allowed in the state of Florida when these are federally. Sorry, I could be wrong. Possibly only state protected trees. But how is this allowed? Who is on watch for this, who has not been maintaining it? I've brought it up randomly over the years. And who is who is watching this for our city? This is our very, very important piece of land. It is so environmentally sensitive, it's not even funny. And how are we letting this guy build four story plus condos? He was only given permission, he he swapped this land in exchange for being allowed to build that overheight building. That's where this ended. This is ours and we should be taking this. We should be making the boardwalk, which was originally supposed to be down the whole length. And I really think we should be, sorry, I don't have much time. We should be embracing the orchids. We should be protecting them, cameras, whatever we need to do, and make this a one of a kind experience in the United States as a mangrove boardwalk with some insane orchids in there on view. And even if it means we're relocating them to one spot so we could just do it, I think that would be perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak specifically on this discussion item? Seeing none, let's go to those online. IT, does anybody have their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
With that, public comments on this discussion item is now closed. All right, thank you, everybody. Was there any follow up conversation from my colleagues on this? Otherwise, we'll proceed. All right, all right. So the next item is under legal. It is proposed resolution R 23-190. I'm going to turn now to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, this board appointed by resolution former interim city council, Weiss-Rota, to do an investigation into Town Square. And unfortunately, it turns out that prior counsel, when he previously worked at Goran Cheroff, actually worked on this item. Therefore, it created a conflict of interest. So he cannot, they cannot both investigate when they also worked on the item. So therefore, I have proposed that we have Pam Ryan, not Ryan Law. Pam is here, she can discuss her qualifications. And you can also discuss if you have any specifics that you would like the scope of her to investigate with relate relating to Town Square, if that, if it pleases the commission.
All right, thank you, city attorney. Let me turn now to my colleagues. Before we turn to the individual, let me just open the floor for any questions to the city attorney. We began on my left last time, maybe on my right this time. Commissioner Cruz, do you have any questions on this item?
Yes, I briefly was able to speak with the city attorney. But it was just a question of, you know, you've probably worked with this person before, so you know who she is and such. But there's I, my position after our discussion would be to see if we could bring forward a few options for attorneys that could handle this and so that the commission could have an option of who to choose from to continue the investigation, if the commission even wanted to continue with the investigation.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. My turn to you now.
Yeah, I I'll say I think the public and the taxpayers deserve to know what happened with this. We owe them this. We owe them this. This is the best we can do. So the idea of not doing this is a slap in the face of the taxpayers. And I'm not going to go with that respectfully, Cruz. The other thing, so city attorney, can you explain the importance of what a conflict interest is with the public and why you would choose, you know, a different attorney, you know, and and what the complications are, you know, for an investigation when there is a conflict of interest?
So in in the scope of an investigation, especially when you're you're investigating how something occurred, you wouldn't hire, for example, if you had a contractor who built your roof and then all of a sudden you had a problem with your roof, you wouldn't hire that same contractor to come back and tell you what went wrong with your roof. So similarly here, we need to have somebody who was not involved, even tangentially, in any of the Town Square project so that they can look at it with fresh eyes and make a determination where along the line the ball was dropped, if the ball was dropped, if so, where? And then further, what recommendations can be made, both from city policies and procedures, perhaps make recommendations as to what can be done to prevent this sort of thing from happening in the future? The reason I I did recommend Pam, Pam was the city attorney for Riviera Beach for 16 years. So she has a wealth of municipal background as to how these things happen along the line from when the developer comes in and how that contract is made and those other things. Additionally, Pam is board certified. I would let her speak more. So as to her qualification, she actually sits on the board certification review board, reviews applicants to become board certified. So also, her rates, I find, are more in line with what a typical city attorney should charge for this kind of work. Personal opinion, sometimes you get a big name. Don't know that they necessarily do a better job, but quite a large price tag. And we do owe it to the taxpayers, but at the same time, we also owe it to the taxpayers to do the job appropriately and with not spending, you know, sending, you know, good money after bad, so to speak. But I, if certainly if if the board commission's decision is for for me to provide the the name of several other attorneys, I can certainly do that. Pam was not the only person I considered. We do have some engagement letters with other firms. And unfortunately, I just find that nearly doubling the cost per hour is just cost prohibitive at this, at this point, in my opinion.
So in essence, and I'm, and as far as whether we hire this firm or another firm, we want options, I'm okay with that. You know, I can, I can explore that. But you're saying because, in in your analogy of the contractor, because of the previous relationships in this, in in this investigation, there is a conflict of interest. So we're looking at previous relationships.
It's not even relationships and.
Or or working.
Yeah, it's direct relationships.
Direct relationship. So a direct relationship is equalling a conflict of interest. Okay. Yeah, so I'm, listen, I'm I'm either way, I can, I can listen to Pam. I can see what my colleagues want to say as far as getting a list. I'm either way, but for me, I think we owe it to the taxpayers. This this needs to be done.
Normally, I I speak last, but let me just say just a few words and I'll go around the dais. I have no intention of stopping. We will get answers. We will learn from our lessons. And the reality is the ball has been dropped, in my opinion, based on the information I know, and it's been dropped more than once. And I wish this had occurred a whole lot sooner so other balls, to continue the analogy, you know, would not have been missed. So, you know, the missed. So, you know, the price that we are paying is greater than perhaps everyone may realize. So I'll leave it at that, because I do fully intend to move forward. There was a question of should we get options, and I'm open to that, but let's hear from everyone else. Commissioner Hay?
I would agree with you, Mayor. We do need to, we do owe it to the public. We do need to do this appropriately, so that we can lesson learned from this. I would like to go with a choice, not just one that's been recommended, even though that person may end up with it. But I would like to have more than one to take a look and choose which one we go with. But we definitely need to move forward on this. So I guess enough has been said. I agree with what's been said. My position as far as going with the team.
Ms. Ryan, Pam Ryan.
Okay, I would just like to have more choices.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
I am of sort of the opposite, but, I mean, I, we need to, there's a conflict. I had a conversation with city attorney. I appreciate you and your recommendation. You know, I looked into Ms. Ryan's background and her history. She's board certified, which if anyone's in the legal world, it is a feat to become board certified and to be able to say that you are a specialist in your field. She is a specialist in her field of city work. So I struggle with our board to be able to take a group of three attorneys and select one over another based on a resume, unlike, you know, when we're interviewing for city attorneys, we're having interviews and there's resumes. And, you know, this is something where we also don't want to slow down, you know, the process either. And so, I mean, my position is, we have a city attorney, and we rely on her to recommend counsel and the best counsel that's in the area that is specialized for what we're looking for. And so, I know I'm, it sounds like I'm outnumbered, but my position is that we rely on our city attorney and her recommendation and move forward with, you know, at least hearing from Ms. Ryan and consider that before we decide that we need to throw a couple extra people in the mix to just delay the process. So that's my position.
Thank you so much. And I'll come back to you in a second, Vice Mayor. As for myself, you know, I am not looking for, let me rephrase, because this is about Town Square, it is about development, it is about P3s and development process, if this board proceeds with options, well, that's how I would make my decision, right? It's not about general experiences, although that's helpful. In this particular instance, what, in my opinion, what we need is that particular experience in P3s development agreements. But I would love to hear from Ms. Ryan to share a little bit about her background, but, and I can hear the majority already of the commission. So I would like, Vice Mayor, let me turn to you. Let's-
Yeah, I just, because I, Commissioner Kelly said, you know, she was outnumbered. No, I, if I can listen to Ms. Ryan and I'm good, I'm ready to move forward. We haven't even let her have a chance to speak. So if she's been in something like this before, then, you know, maybe we can get it done.
Absolutely. Well, this is what I'd like to do next. I just want to hear from the individual, and if she could share about herself and her experience, her background.
I have learned to just wait to be called up, to be called on. So that's why I sat in my seat the entire time. My name is Pamela Ryan, and I'm a partner with Otnot Ryan. I do have over 25 years' experience in city, county, local government law. And although that may sound general, it is quite specific. I have done a myriad of things in my time as city attorney. I've been the attorney for boards, preservation boards, CRAs. I have definitely done land deals, development agreements. We, my firm has done a lot of real estate transactions in the millions of dollars. So I recognize all of the documents that you're talking about, P3 agreements. As city attorney for Riviera Beach, I was involved in all of the Marina land deals while I was at the city of Riviera Beach. So the content of what you're looking for is definitely within my realm. I was not involved in your Town Square project. I have been doing a little bit of reading on it, and I understand why you want to investigate it. I think that a part of what should be investigated is moving forward, finding out what happened, and figuring out a way to not allow it to happen again. I don't know what processes were in place, but I know that in some of the other cities that we represent, we have a huge checklist of things that must be in all, real estate deals, P3 contracts, development agreements. And I don't know if those things were included in your agreements. I have done some reading on it. It looks like some things were left out, but, you know, I don't want to jump the gun. I don't want to accuse anyone. And I definitely want to say that there maybe will be some negative things that come out of it, but also some positive things. You had very good law firms working on this, and so if something was left out, there may be good reasons, but there may also be some reasons that have not come to the surface at this point. I'm happy to investigate for you, but I'm also, I understand your dilemma of wanting to speak to other attorneys. That's fine, of course. I'm here if you need me, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about my background. And I thank you for, Commissioner Kelly, for talking about the board certification. I hate talking about that. It, you know, people say, oh, that's a big deal. I'm like, it's not a big deal. Okay, it's a big deal. No, it is, it's wonderful. I'm glad to give back to the Florida bar. This is the way I do it. I like to speak at different organizations on becoming certified, because the more you do it, the better you get, and the better opportunities that you can give to other attorneys and to your clients. It's important.
All right, thank you. Questions for Ms. Ryan. Commissioner Hay, I see your hands are already up.
What is the name of your firm?
It's Otnot Ryan.
Otnot?
Yes, Hans Otnot is my partner.
Okay.
It took me a while to pronounce the name correctly.
Okay.
Ot's not, yes.
You know, based on what I've heard, I changed my position. Okay, I'm ready to move on with Otnot. Okay, and let's, and let's get, don't do that, and let's get it done. Very impressive. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further comments from my colleagues? Commissioner Cruz, then Vice Mayor?
No, just thank you for your presentation and for speaking to us. And I have now learned that being board certified is really a tremendous accomplishment, so thank you for that. Just wanted to, again, said I had a private discussion with our city attorney about certain things. Now, I did want to clear the record earlier. I do have a First Amendment right to freedom of speech, and what I said earlier was something that was discussed during my agenda review with staff, which was, you know, we'll talk about it at the meeting, and it's, you know, to see what the board wants to do. It was simply a verbatim representation of what conversations I had with staff before, and it does not in any way, shape, or form mean that I am against the investigation. I have supported it before, and I will support it again. It was simply kind of relaying what had been discussed previously at my agenda review. So just wanted to make sure that my words were not taken out of context, and there were no unnecessary and unwelcome personal attacks. Thank you.
I'll just say, I did understand what was intended. I'll turn now to Vice Mayor. You were the second hand up.
Nope. I think what was said was taken out of context, and I'm sorry that you misinterpreted that. But I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R23-TAC 190-TAC A, Resolution in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the reassignment of the Town Square investigation to Pamela H. Ryan, Esquire of Otnot Ryan Law, and providing effective date.
Sir. All right, folks, we have not had public comment on this item. I'd like to turn now to thank you so much, Ms. Ryan.
Very much.
If anyone would like to speak specifically on this item, a motion and a second has been put on the table. Motion made by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Hay. Now would be the time to approach the podium. All right, seeing no one approaching the podium, is there anybody online with their digital hands raised? Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised. All right, with that, public comment on this item is now closed. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you, Ms. Ryan. All right, I believe this concludes all of the items on the agenda. Let me open the floor for closing comments. I do have one housekeeping item, but I can address it now or we can address it later. I just wanted to gauge your schedules for that special meeting. I would recommend next week, Monday. Is that sufficient time for all of you to review? Is that Christmas?
That's Christmas.
Okay, not next week, Monday?
After Christmas.
All right, yes. Let's pull up the calendar.
Mayor, I am committed to the city, but I am not that committed. I am not working on Christmas Day.
All right, definitely not Christmas.
You know me both.
What we can do is, I would prefer, just if you could all just look in your calendars, let's just knock that out now, so everybody knows in advance what is the best time and day for everybody, okay, for the special meeting?
You want us to turn that into the clerk?
That is another option.
Yeah, why don't we talk-
Can we have the clerk reach out to us?
Yeah.
Pick a couple of dates and give it to the clerk.
Yeah, okay, that's fine with me. That's perfectly fine. Closing comments, Commissioner Kelly, then we'll go around.
It's Taco Tuesday. Have a night, Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy New Year. And, no, just Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Hay?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Feliz Navidad, Happy Kwanzaa, and all the others.
All right, well, he said it all. Vice Mayor?
Nope, Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
All right, Commissioner?
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Feliz Navidad, Happy New Year. Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Some of us.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone, and thank you.
Enjoy your family.
They said it so quickly.